Barbara, you all set? Michelle, you ready? Wait. All set? Okay. All right. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone that has a cellphone or any other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
(inaudible)
Here.
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 Here. Yes, welcome Jennifer Sands, our new member.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, we want to go to the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
For February 11th, 2019.
Second.
There's one thing, one minor omission here from the agenda, and that is on the resolutions. There'll be a resolution about the CBD, the adoption of an amendment to the CBD. That was, that's going to be when we get to resolutions. But otherwise, let's move on. We have the review and adoption of the amendment of the municipal master plan for affordable housing. Hello.
Hi.
Elizabeth McManus, MCMANUS, and I'm working as the city's affordable housing consultant.
You don't have to talk up.
Sorry about that. My name is Elizabeth McManus, MCMANUS, and please call me Beth, and I'm working as the city's affordable housing planning consultant.
Michael Kapabianco, CAPABIANCO, and I'm the city manager.
Are we looking for something?
Well, we were, but it broke, so.
Okay. All right, so let's move on.
No, I'm going to blame our IT director or Mr. Manzella who used us last.
All right, let's move on.
So, back in December, we were here to give a presentation on the draft affordable housing plan. Over the last couple of weeks, we've received questions and comments from some board members, some citizens, and some community groups. Beth will give an overview of what the questions and comments were, which is very small, minute changes to the plan, and then what I think we'll just do is open it up to the board and the public with any comments or questions.
Okay.
Is there a plan that's different that you're going to use from the one you submitted into evidence the last time?
Yes.
There's a draft housing plan dated February 7th of this year.
So then let's get it marked, just for identification purposes, please.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
C1?
Okay. So then we're all set? Yes. Great. As was alluded to, we have received some comments. Some of these, some of these have come in via email between city staff and those involved in the community, and then we also got a set of more formal comments issued by Fair Share Housing Center on January 16th of this year. And I thought I would go through the Fair Share Housing Center letter because I think that they have covered the majority of the comments that have come in from a variety of folks.
Excuse me, sorry for interrupting. Barbara, you have the packet. I'm sorry, I should have taken care of this first, please accept my apology. Affidavit mailing, which Barbara's going to submit, called C2, that shows that approves, which is also going to submit, that a notice was sent to the contiguous clerks of municipalities, of all contiguous municipalities, Monmouth County Planning Board, State Office, as well as publication in the Asbury Park Press on a time and basis, so we have jurisdiction to proceed. Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's a great interruption.
Put that all together as C2, please. Thank you.
Okay. So, the first set of comments that I wanted to address are those related to the rehabilitation obligation. And if folks remember, we cite a rehabilitation obligation in here that represents the calculation done by, I don't want to go through the weeds on affordable housing in New Jersey, but a calculation that was done by a judge that looked at the methodology for determining obligations. And so, we followed her obligation, it's Judge Jacobson, in the Mercer County decision for a total third round rehabilitation obligation of 290 units. Fair Share Housing Center has in part questioned where that number came from, and we've provided that explanation. And just so folks know, that obligation from this particular court decision is one that many communities around the state are relying upon in settlement agreements with Fair Share Housing Center. So it's not a number that we developed, that I developed for Asbury Park. Instead, it relies on this other methodology that's been developed for the state. Fair Share also asked a couple clarifying questions. They wanted to confirm, for example, that units that the city rehabilitates for the purpose of meeting that 290 unit obligation, they wanted confirmation that the city does not plan to use the RCA funds that it collected from its RCA sending communities. And I've done that in the plan, and that's certainly the case because frankly, to do so would be inconsistent with COA's rules. And so we've provided that clarification. I've also provided some clarification in the plan in terms of amendments to the draft plan that states specifically that the rehabilitation program will indeed meet the applicable COA rules, and I gave some example citations of that, such as the Uniform Housing Affordability Control rules. It doesn't change, I don't see that as a substantive change to the plan, just a bit of clarification so that folks have more confidence in what the city's intention is. Additionally, we also have gone through to take a look at some of the other comments that they had. Their most significant concern, and the concern that we've heard from other members of the community, is in regards to the idea of providing in this plan for middle-income housing. And just as a reminder, when we talk about affordable housing in New Jersey, most communities refer to low and moderate income housing only, and those income limits related to low and moderate state that households that have incomes up to 80% of the region's median income qualify for affordable housing. That's the maximum income for moderate income. But in this plan, we provide for low, moderate, as well as middle income. And this started back in the 2017 master plan, and master plan reexamination report was continued in this reexam. And the reason why this is done is not simply because there's an existing need for middle-income housing. Instead, it's really an aspirational policy that is intended to reflect what I think folks anticipate to be a continuing trend in Asbury Park, which is as quality of life increases, as development and redevelopment increases, what we're actually seeing is a rise in property values and a rise in sale prices and monthly rents. And so the idea of including middle-income housing is in anticipation of this trend continuing, not only for the next couple of years, but for decades to come. And as that continues, what could happen, and has happened in many communities around the state, is we end up with folks that are wealthy and can afford to buy the market-rate homes in town, and then folks that meet the low and moderate income limits, and those folks qualify for affordable housing in town. And there's very little, or perhaps no, housing in the middle of those two. And so this plan is intended to ensure that in the decades to come, Asbury Park provides housing for the market, for those that can afford market-rate homes, perhaps the wealthy, for those that are middle income. Middle income, of course, is 80 to 120% of median income, and then also those that are moderate and low income. And so essentially, to provide a greater diversity of housing stock in the future. Fair Share does make the point that there's a significant need for low and moderate income housing in the city. And I want to be clear, I'm not disputing that that's a significant need in the city that exists now and is likely to exist in the future, but rather, this policy is intended to make sure that the city is affordable for, like I said, not just simply low and moderate income households and wealthy households, but to try to expand affordability to accommodate as many households as possible in the future. So you really have a much greater diversity of housing stock and families that live here. Other comments included some of the details on inclusionary housing. For example, they had sought an increased set aside of 10% in the Central Business District. Just so folks know, the 10% set aside, which is the lowest set aside that's recommended in your housing plan, this was done because the Central Business District has a relatively low opportunity for providing that compensatory benefit, that incentive that New Jersey communities are required to give developers when they impose an affordable housing set aside. And I say that because the Central Business District has a particular character, it has a historic character, and if you look through the existing redevelopment plan, it cites the number of historic buildings in the area and the desire to maintain building heights and densities for not only those buildings, but also the new construction that's occurring in the area that's complementary of that existing character. And so, I was wary in this plan, and the subcommittee I worked with as well, was wary of permitting substantially increased building heights, as an example, in order to provide an increased set aside. We tried to strike this balance between maintaining that character that folks know and love in the CBD, while also giving something in order to generate, in this case, a 10% affordable housing set aside. Some of the other comments saw additional clarification as to what the city was requesting affordable housing credit for, for example, in the Washington Avenue redevelopment area. And it's been clarified that, and I provide clarity to Fair Share, stating that while the city has plans and intentions of promoting affordable housing in this redevelopment area, we're not currently seeking credit for those units because there's a recognition that rather than simply applying new zoning to this area, the city will work with developers and will create opportunities in the future. Additionally, we also provided additional clarity that the city will work on the Main Street redevelopment area and will conduct an analysis to see how we can incorporate that compensatory benefit, how we can adjust the zoning for this redevelopment area in a way that allows us to create affordable housing, but that work will be part of this next phase of implementation. Fair Share also asked a couple questions about administration and your trust fund, and so I've confirmed with them that yes, the city will indeed go ahead and adopt a spending plan. That's frankly a requirement. One of the things that has been considered is adoption of a development fee ordinance, where the city would generate development fees in the amount of, for residential, 1.5% of equalized assessed value, or non-residential, 2.5% of equalized assessed value for new construction. Once the city adopts that ordinance, you're then obligated to go forward and produce a spending plan that anticipates how much money would be collected and how you would expend it. And I've simply confirmed to Fair Share that yes, the city understands that and will indeed follow the law on it. We also provided some additional clarity, not only to Fair Share, but also in the plan, in your draft housing plan, about how affordable units will be administered. And one of the requirements in the applicable affordable housing rules is that affordable units be administered by somebody that has the experience and the capacity to do so. Essentially, somebody that understands the income qualification process, understands the affordability controls, and how to set rents and sales prices, essentially. We've provided a sentence in your housing plan that states that the city will require all developers of affordable units to utilize the city's designated administrative agent, unless the developer can demonstrate to the city that they have the experience and the capacity to do so themselves. So this, I think strengthens a policy that was already expressed in the housing plan by making sure, and making clear to not only all of you, but also any developers that read this, that they are required to have somebody experienced do this work. They can't simply grab a young staff member and let them figure it out. Instead, it's got to be somebody that's got demonstrated experience, or they've got to utilize the city's folks. I think that's a very quick overview for some of the feedback and some of the questions that we've gotten, but of course, I'm available for any questions all of you may have.
The part you just mentioned about the city designating, or allowing the city to have the developer use their assessor, is there guidelines, are there guidelines out there for that, how the city makes that determination? Or is it kind of on a project-by-project?
Oh, on a project-by-project basis, well, let me back up. I don't think there's a particular guidance document available to the city, but I can help the city provide, I can help the city understand the typical process that takes place, where there's an administrative agent that needs to be brought on board by the city, appointed by the city, there's typically an RFQ process, so that you have that person available. And when a developer gets approval for affordable housing units, I would request that the city, either at the time of developer or redeveloper agreement, if that's going to take place, or at the time of site plan approval, if that's the last interaction they'll have with the city in terms of their approval, that at that time, you get information from them as to whether they have an experienced affordable housing administrator, or whether they'll need to utilize the city's.
One of the items that was mentioned in the master plan, one of the policies that we put into the master plan was to, that we wanted to make sure that we can mitigate the loss of existing affordable housing, so that there's no fear that we will lose what we have. How is that going to pan out in this?
So the purpose of that policy is to give the city, and the purpose of including it in the housing plan is to get the city council, the policy foundation, to take action when they have the opportunity to do so. There may be instances where affordability controls are expiring, and perhaps the developer is seeking a subsidy or a pilot in order to, I can imagine, renovate the units and then extend the affordability controls. And so we have this policy in place so that the council has guidance when that question is asked of them, and has inspiration for taking action when they have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, so that's up to the council?
Yes, yeah, let me be clear, that's squarely within the council's hands.
Okay.
Just on that note, in a redevelopment plan situation, if you were mending or adopting a redevelopment plan, you'd be required to identify any existing affordable housing and discuss how it's going to be maintained.
Good, good, okay.
That's required not by this, but by the statute.
Can you, I know there was a lot of discussion through all of this, having to do with median income, and that's kind of a vague term, you know, if you don't know where that median income is coming from. So can you explain where median, what median income is? From where? Is it a census-based median income? Where does that come from?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So unfortunately, in New Jersey, we're not able to calculate median income on the particular community, because Asbury Park has different characteristics than its surrounding municipalities in Monmouth County. In New Jersey, for affordable housing purposes, when we talk about median income, it has to be based on a region, and that region is, has been previously defined, now decades ago, by the council on affordable housing. And so in Asbury Park, that means that your median, or excuse me, your region is based on the Monmouth, Ocean, and Mercer County region. Furthermore, the income limits, they were previously set annually by COA, they're now being set annually by the various superior courts, but ultimately, the data that they rely upon comes from annual data collected by HUD. It is, and let me be clear, it's not census data, so fortunately, we're not working with data that's perhaps back from 2010 at this point, it's updated annually by HUD, but it doesn't.
Because I was concerned about whether it's current data, or how many years back are we going, so it's annual?
Yeah, it's current data, unfortunately, it's not particularly local, but that's the nature of things in New Jersey.
It's usually updated every April.
Okay, so it's once a year?
Correct.
Would it be, trying to think, easy to say that Asbury Park median income is like one-half of those three regions put together? The numbers I have is like the three counties would be 80,000 to 120,000, the city's 43,400.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's roughly in the ballpark.
But, so shouldn't that play a factor in this decision and not the region decision? And I know this is a very tough question, and I'm dealing with logic that says logically you should be doing X, but maybe throw logic out, and responsibility-wise, should we be doing Y or Z, and protecting what we have now, because if we leave, and I'm going to be hobscotting all over the place, if we leave in middle, aren't we chasing out more lower eventually, and it's more of a gentrification? Because middle, you're looking for a silver bullet down the road, and we don't have that silver bullet yet.
No.
So I don't know where you guys think this middle-class coming to Asbury Park silver bullet is. And if there is a silver bullet, couldn't that be adopted down the road, be it a year, two years, five years, and to, I think, quote you, it could be decades to come. So, we don't have decades. We have to protect what we have now, and if it can be adopted down the road, why wait decades for this to maybe happen, maybe not happen, and why not adopt it with, I know it's only 5% different, but that 5% difference could be very big. Let me throw everything out there, because I wrote down what you were saying. Again, can future expectations be added into the future? Do we deal with aspirational anticipations or reality? You said anticipational, aspirational anticipations, I added, or realities. And decades, so again, couldn't this be amended next year, within the next five years? If that actually happened, where we could address that? And I'm not saying decades, I'm saying, suppose, some people say, well, we won't know who's up here decades from now, but we'll know who's up here a year or two from now. So it could be addressed a year or two from now? And again, I'm just looking at the numbers, I'm scared to death, like, again, the logic makes sense, but in reality, the numbers don't, just because of the low income levels of Asbury Park.
So a few things. First, let me be clear.
And thank you.
A housing plan, yes, it can always be amended, first and foremost. You have the opportunity, you can amend this plan in a year, two years, 10 years from now. But I think the bigger question is about the ordinances that are going to be put in place in order to implement the housing plan, and having the ability or the wherewithal to amend them in the future. As I said, the provision of middle-income housing is not about a, is less about a current need than it is about the need in the future. And one of the things I'm concerned about is, as the zoning is put in place, it's, you know, let's presume, let's hope that it's successful in that it invites redevelopers, that attracts developers to the city to go ahead and implement this new zoning, meaning they would build a new multifamily, they would provide, perhaps for the sake of your question, all low and moderate income housing units for its affordable housing set aside. But in 15 years from now, when the city is experiencing a loss and a need for middle-income housing, that opportunity will have been lost. And that's my concern, that once the, once the units are built, once the low and moderate income units are in place, the city is not going to have the ability to go back to that developer and say, "We would like you to now set aside an additional X percent, or an additional X units for middle-income housing." Additionally, the city is not going to be permitted to go back to that same developer and say, "We'd like you to convert a portion," if you were so inclined, "convert a portion of your low and moderate income housing units to middle-income housing," because they'll all be subject to a deed restriction. So once these projects are built, your opportunity to generate middle-income housing will be lost. Additionally, I also get concerned about the city having to undertake such a significant effort in the future. This is, and certainly it can be done, but this has been a significant effort in terms of resources spent by all these board members, as well as by the subcommittee staff and the public to be involved in this process. And what we're essentially suggesting is that we may have to do an updated, a new look to adjust the most critical piece of this plan, which is the affordable housing set asides, in just a handful of years. And lastly, I'm concerned that even in just-
Do me, I'm sorry.
Please.
Do me a favor, say that again, because that one may do sense to me.
I'm concerned about the city committing to going through this significant effort in just a few years from now, because this has taken a lot of resources, both in terms of financial resources, but also personal resources from everybody that's been involved. And I get concerned when municipalities suggest that they may, they may need to do this all over again. Certainly, you have the ability to go through the plan amendment process, but I'd suggest that folks should think carefully about whether or not you want to go through this process in just a few years later.
One of the things when, one of the things as we move forward with this, is keep in mind, there is a cost. There is actually the dollar cost of this. So, once this gets adopted, we still have to create the inclusionary zoning ordinances, which again, will be a consultancy, and there's five or six zones that have to be addressed, along with aspects of the master plan that myself and Madam Chairwoman and the Vice Chair have spoken about. There is a true dollar amount to doing these things. My concern, Beth spoke eloquently, I'll be a little bit more blunt, is 10 years ago, none of this was done, that's why we're sitting here today. That's why we're trying to address and stem the loss of affordable housing. I don't want to be in a position, I don't want the board to be in a position, I don't think anyone wants to be in a position where in five years, we sit there and say, "Oh, wait a minute, we lost the middle class because we didn't do something about it." And while yes, some of us will still be here in one, two, five years, we still have another year of ordinances that have to be written. So, this is a plan, so in my opinion, is aim for the moon, stars, and the sun, and hope for the best as the ordinances get written over the next year. That's when we'll really start to see the meat and potatoes, where you can start to massage some of the numbers.
Again, I understand the logic, I'm just looking at the hard numbers. And the hard numbers say, right now, we have here and here, and there is no middle class, and maybe, everything's a maybe on this whole plan. And maybe if we don't have more affordable, and knock out the middle, we could have more people moving out of Asbury Park because it's not affordable?
One of the conversations I had today was with Interfaith, and they said that they're starting to see that, as people's income levels have started to rise throughout the city, through more job opportunities in the city, within the region, someone might be qualified as low to moderate income today, but in six months, when they go get to be recertified, someone may have gotten a promotion, gotten a raise, now they're not qualified. So they're not eligible for that low, moderate income area, where now they would actually be in that quote-unquote "middle-class" area. So, Interfaith was actually one of the people who said, when we talked today about this, that they're starting to see that on the ground, that they're losing that opportunity. And internally with RCAs, we see more and more people who have to get turned away because they don't meet the income guidelines. It's roughly about one every 12 people we actually can help, because they're over income. And it might be a dollar, but the numbers are static. We can't sit there and say, "Okay, you're a dollar over, we can help you." It is a hard number.
Just one question, is there isn't any way we can modify those numbers so that-
The dollar numbers?
What's middle class in Homedale is not going to be middle class in Asbury Park? So, and there's no, nothing that says you can do, we can make an exception, we understand that there are differences within communities and within the state, and this is what we can do to modify that?
Your low and moderate income limits, no. If you, if the city wants to be able to obtain credit for the units, no, you must follow that regional, those regional income limits for the three-county region. For the middle-income housing, because those units are not eligible for credit, if the city were so inclined to set it at something other than 120%, we could adjust that through either this process, or when it goes before council for the ordinance introductions. Since, and I say that again, simply because those middle-income units are not going to be eligible for credit regardless, it's just the low and moderate income units that will be.
And is it possible to use housing trust fund monies that have been received from developers to change that, or is that, does that trust fund money only be held into the income limits?
The housing trust fund money must be used on units that are eligible for credit.
So any money the city collects, it has to be for those figures?
Yes.
Does the board have any other questions that they would like to-
Does the board have any other questions that they would like to have answered?
As far as putting caps on years, I think I asked at the December meeting, and the answer was, I said that's be better than other municipalities, let's go more than thirty years, and somebody said it's illegal. And how do other municipalities do it?
Well, it's not that it's illegal. So, right now, any new affordable housing units that get created either today or perhaps recently in the past, but certainly in the future, they are most likely, and I would recommend, that they utilize the model affordability controls that are set forth in the, in Affordable Housing Regulations. Those model affordability controls state that the unit shall be affordable for thirty years, for not less than thirty years, and until action is taken by the municipality to release those controls. So it means that for the first thirty years, the unit must be affordable, there's nothing the city can do. After thirty years, the city may choose to release the unit's affordability controls or may not. So that means that the city has the power to essentially require that the units be affordable perpetually, for ninety-nine years, for fifty years, for whatever amount of time it seems to make sense. So while the city can, in most instances, create a longer period of affordability controls, I don't actually recommend that you do so, because the power to release or to hold on to those affordability controls sits with the city anyways. So if you set it for, instead of the typical language of at least thirty years until released by the municipality, if you change that to say, state fifty years, you might actually have a lesser period of affordability than you would have otherwise. I just simply don't think it's necessary, and I would prefer to keep the control within the city, so that you can make that decision at the right time to either continue the controls or not to.
Okay. That's good. So I'm applicant A, and I have thirty years. My thirty years is running up. Do I have to make an application to Mayor and Council to extend or relieve me? Or if Mayor and Council's asleep in the city, Clerk's asleep, and the City Manager's asleep, all of a sudden, bing-bang, it's done with?
If they use... If they use, if it's a recent unit, I'm gonna presume that they've used this model affordability control. So in that example, the controls are not released until the city takes action. So that means that they would need to come to the council and say, "Mayor and Council, we've had these units affordable for the last thirty years, we like the right to rent them or want to rent them at market rates." And at that point, the city council can say yes or no.
But they would have to come to Mayor and Council and ask for that?
Yes, the new form of affordability controls requires that.
Okay.
And that's deed restricted?
Yes.
So in case they ever wanna get a clear title, they have to come clear that with the municipality?
Yeah, thank you. When I say the term affordability controls, it's nine times out of ten, the form of a deed restriction.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we have any questions from the public? Please come. Now, these are questions, not comments. These are questions. Please state your name and address.
Maureen Nevin, DLA Court. My question involves the Builders' Remedy, these incentives that they developed back in, what was that, what is the act that we're dealing with now?
I think you're, well, we talk about the Fair Housing Act, but the Builders' Remedy was established in Mount Laurel case law back in the nineteen-seventies.
Mount Laurel?
Yeah, that's a body of case law.
Yeah. So, I'm just asking if it's still reasonable to be going under this assumption, seeing that we really, it's not a hard thing to ask a developer if they will come and build on the oceanfront in Asbury Park. I mean, you know, just pick up the real estate section on a Sunday. Everybody knows that it's a very popular place to come. So I would ask that you review whether the incentives are really practical now. To it now, or...
Well, in terms of the waterfront area, one of the things that's important, while this is an area that certainly does hold a lot of development capacity in the city, we have limited ability to impose an affordable housing set-aside. I'm sorry, I wanna face you, but I can't get captured by the microphone. We have a limited ability to impose an affordable housing set-aside at this time, and that's because the waterfront redevelopment area is subject to an existing redevelopment agreement that sets forth the rights and responsibilities of not only the city, but also the redeveloper. And because that redevelopment agreement is in place, because approval of it has already taken place, the city is unable to go ahead and do what would be necessary, which is essentially to undo that redevelopment agreement at this time. It's been adopted, it's been effectuated. If the developer were to come in for substantial changes, that might create an opportunity to have a discussion about incorporating affordable units, but...
Are we talking about all redevelopers, or the master developer only?
I'm referring to any redeveloper with an existing redevelopment agreement. And I think part of this is because, part of your question relates to the fact that in order to impose that affordable housing set-aside on the developer, to basically state, "Developer, you have to now provide ten, fifteen, twenty percent of your units as affordable." The municipality, any municipality is required to give something in exchange. It's referred to as a compensatory benefit. So, we can't just simply say, "Developer, now you've got twenty percent of your units that have to be rented at below market rate." The city would have to give something in exchange. And that triggers, that alone, in addition to the existence of these redevelopment agreements, that would trigger a different process of amending, not only amending the redevelopment agreement, but potentially amending the redevelopment plan as well.
So this would be a court situation? What would be the...
I would hope it wouldn't be a court situation, but it would...
Or an amendment?
But it would be, yeah, it would require amendments to redevelopment agreements and potentially redevelopment plans as well.
And if you compare that with other things that you mentioned today, which sound like they would be very expensive to go back and change later on, how would you compare those, this particular, just this incentive aspect to those kinds of ramifications?
It's a little bit different. When I talked before, I think you're referring to the mayor's question about going back and having to go through this process again to amend the plan. What I'm referring to there is really just the financial and the personal political effort put into this process that we're all going through now. The concerns I have about the waterfront redevelopment area are actually legal obstacles. We don't have the ability to amend the redevelopment plan at this time and say, "Developer, you shall now comply with these new standards," because we have that redevelopment agreement in place.
Unless, of course, the state government was to change it?
I don't think, I wish that the, I don't think the state can really get its hands into that redevelopment agreement. This is really, it's a city document, it's owned, managed, administered by the city.
So the city could change it, then?
We can't unilaterally change any of the agreements without I-STAR's approval, in the waterfront.
So it's a negotiation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Rogers, ten thirty-four, Sewell. Question. What is the actual, for one person? What is the middle income for one person in Asbury? If you throw middle income in?
Saying in Asbury.
Oh, I'm sorry, in Asbury, I don't have that figure.
Well, no, for the region, for the region.
Oh, for the region, yeah, give me one.
Eighty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-two.
Thank you.
So, we're talking about a person making eighty-three thousand, and we've talked about losing, I say, if you look at some of the statistics that we've seen, populations have decreased in the last five years at about fifteen to twenty percent, which I've seen is, I've never seen that in my life for a town. So the most vulnerable people, we are not looking at, making sure we're looking at. You negated to talk about the RCA program in the plan. You've alluded over it, but you never gave us a hard number on how many units we actually have remaining.
Through the RCA program? So I didn't get into that, because even though it's an affordable housing program, RCA units, because the city is a receiving community rather than a sending community, those, I don't wanna discount their importance to the families that live in those units and that were able to have safe, decent, and affordable units as a result of the RCA program. But those units are not part of the city, because of the way affordable housing in New Jersey, those units are not part of the city's affordable housing plan. They're part of the sending community's affordable housing plan. So oddly enough, when those sending communities count their affordable, for the record, I'm doing air quotes, their affordable units, those towns are counting units in Asbury Park against their obligation. So I would expect that in those sending communities, you would see a whole recitation about this RCA program and where they sent the money and what it resulted in. For the city's affordable housing plan, it's not discussed, because, like I said, although it's an important source of just affordable units in the city, it doesn't generate credit, it doesn't in any way answer the city's affordable housing obligation. It's simply a community development program.
I can understand that, and it didn't have to be drawn out that long, because I've been looking at the numbers, and we are looking at about a hundred units that we still are obligated for, and this is going back from two thousand and six. So we have a rehabilitation obligation of two hundred and ninety, and we're still looking at a obligation of a hundred, and we're looking at round three, when this obligation is supposed to be met. But we couldn't meet our obligation for almost twelve, fifteen years. How are we not acknowledging that we are in a shortfall, and that we have a lot more to give back, a lot more people who are being pushed out, and a lot more people who need to be taken care of to not to leave? And I don't think if, and tell me if I'm wrong, if we're looking at saving middle class, would an option of rent control help that process? Because we have a lot of conversions on the waterfront, about twelve to fifteen buildings, that right now, people are being, how can I say, kind of weeded out, waiting for that big turnaround to come? And those properties are going to turn around, and they're gonna go from rents, because they're not updated, they're not fixed up. But when they are, it's gonna go from fourteen hundred to twenty-four hundred overnight. So, if we're looking to be progressive, we need to solve problems as they come, not be, as the mayor says, assumptive on something we have no, no numbers on, and where we're going. So if we're looking to reduce our obligation in the twenty percent to five percent, that number seems to be...
Fifteen percent.
Well, fifteen, well, yeah. If we're looking to do that, there are a lot of people in need, and if you know Asbury's population, there are people who are living on other people's couches. And so, as much as we can do, and we're not looking at people who work for the beer garden, who are, who come in here to serve and do a job, we're not talking about the people, seniors, who are here, and their incomes, they're going down. And let's be clear, a police officer starts off at thirty-four thousand dollars. So, if he can't even afford to live here, one of the things we want is police officers to live here. So we need to take into account what's going on now, and not what's going on later.
All right, I'm just going to ask for anybody else that's gonna come up to please stay with a question. This is the question portion, not the comment portion, it's the question portion. Feel free, if you have a question, come on up. You have a question? Okay.
Alicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue. Listening to the presentation, I have a portion later that I'm gonna go on my whole soapbox, but in the presentation, I heard two questions from the mayor and councilwoman that I believe, if I interpret it right, is, from the councilwoman was, can we change and modify the middle income? And the answer to that, I believe, was yes, right? We can?
Because middle income is not a regulated part of affordable housing in New Jersey, the city does have flexibility if the city decided to want to define it differently. Because those units are not gonna be eligible for credit regardless of how it's defined.
So we can use middle income right now, the wording, middle income, but drop it from a person of one making eighty-three thousand dollars to more so Asbury's middle income that's outside of the affordable, which is maybe about sixty, right? Or fifty, fifty-seven thousand dollars?
If the city's so inclined to change the definition of middle-income housing, I would, I would actually recommend a more streamlined approach, rather than trying to create a wholly different set of income calculations to determine who qualifies for middle, and make that different than determining who qualifies for low and moderate. What I would recommend is that we simply adjust the percentage of median income that that's used in the definition of middle income. So for example, right now, middle income is between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of median income. If there's a desire from the city to bring that maximum income for middle-income housing down, I'd recommend that we instead change the percentages to eighty to a hundred and ten, or eighty to a hundred percent of median income, something along those lines, so that when we, when we go ahead and try to calculate what those income limits are, we're relying upon the same basic methodology, just applying different percentages of it. It's, I think it would directly address your concern, but it would do so in a more simple process.
Okay. Is it similar to when we changed...
Felicia, hold on, sorry.
Yeah, and the question Michael just asked me was whether that could be done at the ordinance level, and the answer is yes. When the council drafts the ordinance, when it introduces it, it has the power to adjust the income percentage, for the sake of this question, of middle income, as it sees fit.
Like we did for the master plan, 'cause I believe in the master plan, we upped the minimum income level inside of the master plan?
In the, yeah, in the master plan, we made a recommendation to include middle income, and I think it included a definition as to what that would be, between eighty and a hundred and twenty. But, but again, just because the master plan says that, just because the housing element states that those income limits, it doesn't mean that the council can't adjust it as it sees appropriate when it comes time for the ordinance introduction and adoption.
All right. So what I heard is that, yes, we can do it, and yes, we have done it, and yes, we can do it again?
I think I said, let me just stick with, yes, you can do it. The council can adjust the percentages if it wants to when it comes time for the ordinance introduction.
All right. And... My chicken scratch, I apologize. And the mayor was talking about future proposals, and the time lock on it, and how other municipalities put in, most of them do ninety-nine years. My concern is...
Hold on, let me just make a correction for the record. Most municipalities actually do thirty years. There are some towns and some projects that have ninety-nine years, but thirty years, or even for older projects, just twenty years is the more typical deed restriction period.
Okay. All right, and a question, right?
This is a question.
Okay.
Right. So, in the question, if we wanted to put in ninety-nine years, or seventy-five years, or the medium of three, the max of ninety, well, no max, but say, we just wanna say ninety-nine-year deeds, could we?
In most cases, yes. There are certain funding programs that have affordability controls that are required as part of the funding. But in most cases, the municipality could go ahead and put in its affordable housing ordinance that it wants a longer affordability controls. For rental projects, it may require a readjustment of the compensatory benefit, essentially that additional density or building height that's given, because developers are, developers may be looking at this as a thirty-year period. I wouldn't recommend they do so, given what I, how I described the affordability controls. But, but I think, before I say an unequivocal yes, I wanna just add a caveat, that I would wanna think that through, about, does the compensatory benefit need to be adjusted, given the minimum required affordability control period of seventy-five or a hundred years, however it may be changed?
One of the things to keep in mind, too, is that there's the practical component...
One of the things to keep in mind, too, is that there's the practical component of this. If a developer's coming forward saying, we want to do this project, they're going to usually want something under the long-term tax exemption. They're going to want a pilot. And under the state law, a pilot can run 30 years. So they're going to come to us, we're going to say, let's see your economics, let's see the pro forma, over a 30-year period, but then, on the other hand, we're going to say, oh, but you have to keep it affordable for 99. That's actually going to be a project that would be negative to the city at the end of the day. And how do you impose something when one hand is saying 30 is a state law, under a pilot agreement, and then the other hand is saying 99? It's much better to keep them consistent. And as Beth has alluded to, it has to be a council action in the future to get rid of the affordability control. So the power lies within this building. So just from a practical side, if we're sitting there with the developer, we're going to look at it for 30 years because of the pro forma, under the long-term tax exemption law. We can't do math for 99 years.
I'm saying that 99, because we also, like the current lady was speaking-
Beth?
No. Ms. Marine, earlier, about a prior agreement from the city, that now, almost 20 years later, we kind of have to pay for. The city's been paying for, and the residents have been paying for. Right now, we can only guarantee the people sitting there now, not 30 years from now. And 30 years is a blink of an eye. So having those agreements, saying these seniors are safe for 99 years, and the rest would be negotiable. So saying, isn't it not negotiable to sit with this developer? Well, maybe that's not a developer who only wants 30 years. Maybe there's another developer that will do the 75 years. The whole town is a beachfront town, so we're all, the whole town is desirable. Is it not fair to say that, say, if the city council wanted to, and the planning board wanted to say 99, and then negotiate with the future developers, isn't that possible?
It's, is it possible, of course. Is it practical? No, because every developer's going to say, I only have to do this for 30 years, under the long-term tax exemption for the pilot. At 30 years, it's up to whoever owns the property at that point in time, to come back to the city. And most developers do not hold the project for 30 years. They're going to sell it. The senior towers has been told sold like six or seven times since I've been here. It's always flipping. So I do not expect, in any practical environment, to someone to sit and hold for a 30, 35, and 99-year time. It's just not practical in this day and age. They'll make their money, they'll flip it. Someone else will make their money, they'll flip it. It just doesn't work in the real world. But yes, on paper, it would look nice, but rubber hitting the road, it should be consistent.
Because on paper, you know, those 30-year deals and 20-year deals, there's Steven Manor that had a similar deal, and now, that was affordable. Now it is, has a 20-year, 15-year left on their 20-year deal, and families are going to be moved out, and it's all of a sudden going to be market rate, and then we're going to lose those, going to use that opportunity. Where originally, we could just, like you said, it's been sold, so a lot of people are making their money, and they still fall under those, you know, tax, that same tax deal, that 30-year obligation. You can still make money and stay under that 30-year obligation, 100-year obligation.
But keep in mind, the existing projects that do or do not have affordability controls, most of them don't, and Beth has alluded to this, and the question was asked from the board, once the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is established, and it starts collecting fees, at that point, if we know Building A is coming up in five years, we can start that discussion with the developer, the property owner, I'm sorry, saying, okay, we want this to remain affordable, we have money, how can we then, okay, you're going to be $1,400 now, $1,700, the city has money to split that delta. We can meet that $300 a month delta per unit and get there, but first, we need to get money. Or find something that the developer would want for the compensatory benefit. But until we get the plan adopted and everything else, we don't collect any money. Cash is going to be king. If someone's going to say, I want to go from 14 to 17, how do we stop that? It's cash.
Honestly, in this town, it's not 14 to 17, it's 14 to 22, it's 14 to 27, it's 12 to 22. It's 12 to, there's some I've seen that's close to $2,800.
Even more reason for this to be adopted tonight, so we can go to start the court process to get the fines, the fees collected through the development fees.
I'm for collecting the fees, but I'm also for making sure that we don't have a mistake that we pay for 20 years in the future, you know, push it 100 years in the future, or 60 or 70 years in the future. Because we can do it. And we might be one of the rare people, but Asbury is very rare. That's pretty much it.
Okay, next question.
Okay, I have a question about-
Name and address.
Okay, my name is Carrie Butch, I live on Deal Lake Drive. Let me see if I can figure out how to ask this question. When the redevelopment plan was first created, the waterfront redevelopment plan, we were told that they didn't have to have affordable housing in the plan, because we had enough affordable housing in Asbury Park. Now that was the intention, it's to bring in additional tax dollars, and also, the impact created unaffordability throughout the rest of the town, as is happening now. You see rents going up. So the actual justification for not having, can we go back to that, and talk about whether that intention, and the justification for not including affordable housing in the waterfront? Could we go back to that and-
Can I just make something? I mean, you guys can answer however you like. The waterfront redevelopment plans are not part of the purview today.
Okay.
They're not part of this decision-making process that we're going through.
Okay, I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm sorry.
Just so you know, I mean, you can certainly bring that up to the council whenever you like, but it's not part of the purview today.
I guess what I wanted-
The waterfront is not part of it.
I wanted to understand, I just want to understand intention versus impact. So we intended something with the, with one major redevelopment plan, what was the impact? And I think we have to be very careful about impact, and I guess my, the other thing we're studying right now, a group of us in town, we're studying diversity on boards and commissions, we're studying race, we're taking a look at impact.
And the question is-
Okay, and the question is, this is very important for this plan.
Good.
Why aren't there any race demographics in this plan? Whereas that's pretty standard stuff, socioeconomic data. Because that would enable us to compare where we were, like, for example, in our master plan in 2006, we do have the race demographics, but in 2017, we don't. So if we have those demographics, I'm not, I'm not saying that we intend anything, there's no intention, but should we know the impact of what we're doing? Should we understand the impact? And I guess my question is, why are there no race demographics in this plan?
The demographic section of the housing plan is, does not address race. To be clear, that's not something that's actually addressed in any, just about any housing element I've seen in New Jersey. Perhaps someone does, but I haven't put my fingers on it yet. It's not typically included in the housing plan in part, because we're predominantly, I understand your point, I don't want to dismiss it, but we're predominantly concerned about housing, housing quantity, housing quality, housing type, as well as job indicators, and income indicators as well. It's not a required portion of the housing element as set forth in the municipal land use law or the Fair Housing Act, so it's not a typical piece. That said, I think there are other documents available in the city that do address racial characteristics. I want to say it's part of your workforce development plan. So that information is available, but it's, but you're correct in that it's not in the housing element, and that's simply because, although affordable housing is certainly very much related to racial issues in the state, segregation, it's not a required component of a housing plan.
And you, is it, in a community like Asbury Park, which is so diverse, which we're so thankful for, okay, isn't it traditional that those demographics are in there?
No, not in a housing element in Fair Share Plan.
In the most recently updated master plan, on page 104, there's a section titled, "Demographic and Labor Trends."
Can you read those demographics to me? Are there any-
There's no-
Race demographics in the 2017 plan?
I'm not about to start reading the 40 pages.
Is it available for you to access online anytime you like?
I'll tell you why, Michael, because I looked for it, and I couldn't find it. So, and I kind of got nervous when I couldn't find it. Because it's in the 2006 plan, and it's not in the 2017 plan.
It's selected statistics from what was part of the RFP process for the master plan process. It's on page 104, and the data is dated, the report itself is dated January 2, 2018.
It's in an updated version, and you're going to show me it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the work you've done.
Hi, Randy.
Hi, Randy Moore, Sunset Ave. Thank you all for putting the plan together and taking the time throughout the process to talk to us, and include a lot of the comments we provided. I'll try to be quick with my questions. You stated that the middle income limit was $83,000, and 5% would be set aside for that income limit. What would the rent be? What would be an affordable rent for that?
These are just illustrative, but example rents. For middle income housing, the rents would range for a one, two, or three-bedroom unit, they would range from roughly $2,200 to $3,100 per unit, so, per month, I should say.
That seems really high to deed restrict housing in a community when we're talking about what the need is for affordable housing. Could you read the same numbers for-
Page 7 of the report.
Could you read the same numbers for the moderate income?
Sure. Moderate for, again, for rents for a one-bedroom to a three-bedroom, those rents would range from roughly $1,100 to $1,500.
So don't we think that maybe the market rents are going to be covered by that middle income?
Well, first, I think it depends on what area of the city we're talking about market rents, and I think we're also talking about, I think we also have to ask what time period we're referring to.
Well, these will increase every year as the income levels-
Yeah, that's true, but I guess, but I guess I took the question to, would market rate rents cover the middle income? Maybe, not only now, but in the future, and I guess in the future, that's the question. The housing plan includes, sort of inherent to it, is the assumption that housing prices are going to continue to increase in the future, and with that, middle-income households are going to be maybe priced out of finding housing that is affordable to them.
I would argue, I think it would be more important to keep the 20% in and get rid of the middle income, and looking at the, I would argue to get rid of the 5% of middle income and keep 20% across the board for low and moderate. And then I would ask that you would consider increasing the Central Business District up to 15%. You had read the input from Fair Share, that that 10% seemed really low, so I would ask that that would be raised up to 15%. I think that that's the standard that we're seeing across the state, when communities are implementing these plans and doing set-asides, 15% is the standard. I think it could be supported there in conversations that we've all had with developers, and with others across the state, and people that are interested in this, so I think that could work. Thank you.
I have three questions, but I'm a follow-up on the rent question.
Please identify yourself again for the record.
Tracy Rogers. I'm going to follow up on the rent question. And this is to Michael. We have one of our developers here, Sacman, and can you tell me what the rent is in the Central Business District?
For a Sacman property?
For a Sacman.
You guys want to answer that?
I just wanted to all to sound out.
It varies per property, per unit, per amenity, it varies. And I'm not going to speak to their rent levels, we don't get that information provided to us. We hear anecdotally, but I'm not going to just throw out random numbers of what we think.
No, I've gone on the list, it's about 2,400, similar to what Beth said. Now, we're looking at a project that came in last year that wanted to put affordable housing and market rate on First Avenue, that proposal. Would you see that 80% of those units being in the same cost as the Sacman?
I think, again, you're comparing apples to baseballs in districts, in amenities, in size and scope. You just can't compare across the city.
Market's going to dictate. I mean, we're not going to, you know, if the Central Business District is our whole book in, I don't think First Avenue is going to do better than the Central Business District, but I think it's going to be up there, because that's what the market is deeming, and we're not putting any controls on that 80%. So when you're saying you're putting that 5%, you're actually adding 85% of that rent that's going to be paid on that new unit on First Avenue, as what they're actually paying for middle income. So I just, I just don't see it. But we're going to the next one. Michael, you said the cost of redoing this plan would be substantial. Can you tell the, can you tell the board, if we wanted to make amendment changes, and if you went, what's the normal practice after this? If we went to court, and somehow our plan was rejected, would we be back here, and would it substantially cost us what we're looking to do?
I don't want to hypothesize, because it depends. If the court rejects it and says you need to fix A and B, it might not cost us anything. If it's A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, well, that could be more expensive. After this is adopted, and we get court approval, the next step is to write the inclusionary zoning ordinances for the five or six districts that have been identified. That's going to roughly cost us $5,000 to $6,000 per district. So you're looking at creating the zoning, the actual implementation ordinances of about $30,000 to $40,000, because there's going to be public meetings, there's going to be hearings. So yes, there is a dollar cost of this.
Exactly. So it's better to get it right the first time, to save as many, and if we can sit down and negotiate some of these points that we're pushing, it would actually save us financially. Because as I watch some of the other cities that are going through this process, we're actually kind of going a little skewed, because most of the times, we just take, cities that negotiated with Fair Share have just taken the plan already to the court, and then we come back and work out the details, and see what they want and what they don't, because Fair Share is the person that we're going to be standing in front of. So I'm saying, if we're worrying about cost, we're still in that process of worrying about this cost, through the process that we're doing now. I'm saying, let's hold off, let's take this for next two to three, I don't want to go past next month. If we can just sit down and work through these few points that we have, we don't look to come out with redoing things, or probably having a higher cost.
All right. Who's next on the question?
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I'm kind of late on this subject, but I'd like to know, how many affordable units do we have in Asbury?
It was approximately 1,400 that were identified, but varying degrees of deed restriction. I've read it before.
Very what?
Varying degrees of deed restriction.
Like, that takes in all the senior buildings, right?
Yes, it's in the plan.
How many medium, do, I've never heard that number, that used, medium income?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No.
Well, if you're going to vote on something tonight, shouldn't you know how many units you have altogether?
Well, please keep in mind, this isn't about what's happened in the past, this is for future development as it happens. So that if there's a development project at this building, for example, what does this building then hold? We're not talking about anything that's happened in the past, we're talking about development as it occurs moving forward in the future.
But I, you know, I used to be on the Housing Authority, and that number was much lower, so it's, there's a lot more affordable units today than there were, say, 20 years ago, right? How does that number work? With the population?
What number? Like, the affordable units?
Affordable units. I mean, how do we know that we-
It's project-driven.
Huh?
Project-driven. If a developer comes in and says, we want to build 40 affordable units, that's 40 affordable units. If a developer says, we don't want to build any affordable units, that's 40 non-affordable units. This process is for the future development to require affordability.
Oh, that's why some towns don't have affordable units, is that right? You know, this-
Well, that's a whole other debate and discussion.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. McNolay. She said there, she was moving the microphone.
Hi, Ernest McNolay, Deal Lake Drive. Excuse my voice. I've been coming, of course, to the planning meeting and I know how important this inclusion of affordable housing is in Asbury. So, my question is, at several meetings, at all meetings, the city manager and the planning expert have indicated that we've done this in multiple other municipalities. And I remember a few meetings ago asking you, can you name a few of those for me? And I'm still asking that question. In other words.
Name who your special master.
I listened to your.
Yes.
Oh, is your question, where do I serve as a special master?
No, in the combination of the city manager and yourself.
Right.
On numerous occasions, repeatedly, you've stated, we've done this before. City manager Cap Bianco said, I did it where I came from, up in Little Ferry, and we've done it all over.
Okay.
So, what I want to know is, can you tell me those communities? And I'll tell you why I'm asking you that. Because in a city like Asbury, when you toss around a number like eighty thousand as a median income, that's a Twilight Zone figure. It's more like thirty thousand. Now, that's number one. Number two, when you're talking about inclusion for the fifteen thousand people that live here, you should be talking about building medium income developments and set aside some luxury units. And we're like doing it the other way. We're over here, you know, like, for example, Ocean Club. What, what, what's going to be affordable in there?
All right, once again, the waterfront is not included here, so please stick. The waterfront redevelopment plan is not included in this discussion.
No, no, wait.
So, let's stick to the question.
I'm not saying that it is. But you have to understand something. This is only a mile plus small city. So, every district matters. And it's not really helpful when we focus on one area and say, well, let's load that one up with affordable housing and that'll compensate for all the other quadrants that we're not offering that. I mean, look, look, okay, so that's my first question. At some point, would you and the city manager provide me with those communities that you both state that you've done numerous times before? The names of the communities?
I can run through a, a quick list of the towns I've written housing plans for.
And that includes the city manager?
Well, I can't speak for Mr. Cap Bianco.
You present together.
Let her answer, please, please.
I knew you'd stop me. Go ahead.
Okay, let's see. Towns that I've written housing elements for include Flemington Borough, Union Township, Hunterdon County, Greenwich Township, Warren County, Hamilton Township, Mercer County, Pitts Grove Township, Salem County, Cape May Point, Cape May County, Avalon Borough, Cape May County, Ocean, Oceanport Borough, Little Silver Borough, both of which are in Monmouth County.
That's enough.
Okay.
Okay.
That's enough.
Okay.
Do you know the median income in those towns that you just named? It's the highest in the county.
I don't, you know, well, I don't know off the top of my head, but I will say the median income.
What's the question?
The question is, okay, so I'm going to be provided with, when the city manager and the planner and this expert say to this body that you've done it many, many times, I'm going to be provided with a list.
She just gave you a list.
Well, what?
She just gave you the list of.
What kind of list is that?
What, it's the list you asked for.
All right, let me ask you a question. Why is it whenever we ask for everything, it's either verbal or sort of like informal?
And you can also listen, I'm sorry, but you can listen to it on AP TV anytime you like. It's right here. It was already provided.
It's right here.
It was right, it was just provided to you in front of everyone here. And it was also on AP TV and you can watch it anytime you like. It's available to you. It was just given.
No, but not by the city manager. He said, he's done many as city manager in multiple municipalities. And I asked him back then, name the municipalities. So far, where's his list?
It's up to you.
In Scotch Plains, I did first, second, third round certification and we did second round twice because of a, a court challenge. In Little Ferry, I did second and third round. And here, we've, well, almost done with the plan.
So, Scotch Plains and Little Ferry?
Yes, five plans.
The last time you spoke, you made it sound like you did half New Jersey.
Do you have another question, please?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We, we have a lot of other applications we have to listen to. Please.
Look, I'm a taxpaying homeowner here. You give a lot of people a lot of time. And just because maybe I ask questions the way I do, that doesn't mean that you should cut me off.
I'm trying to stick with questions. So, please, please.
You let all the people make comments. I didn't say anything.
Please. What's your next question?
Next. Whenever you bring up data, you know, you, you bring up these numbers like median income and, you know, this data is readily available. Crime is available. Median income is available. Single family households is available. Poverty level is available. Is it wrong? It's not wrong. I know by, by data, this city is, is impoverished by poverty. And I don't hear anything about people for, who are in poverty. It's, it's, it's loaded with homeless people. And somehow, we're supposed to sit and think that you mean, in good faith, and I don't mean you personally, that this meeting means in good faith that of these fifteen thousand people, that most of them, they're lucky if they earn thirty thousand dollars. And a lot of them have three, four, five, six kids. I mean, you know, they're lucky to eat. And you want us to believe that in this plan, based on what we see in all quadrants, that, that this is going to really be for the real people here or is it just like another, another? You know, you see stuff go up like you do in Asbury and then after it's done, our question is always, how did that get done? How did that get done for luxury rentals with a thirty-year tax abatement? You know, takes the sun and the moon and the sunset away from us.
Mr. McNolay, this is a, this is an affordable housing plan to create deed restricted housing for affordable housing.
What is it?
It's an affordable housing plan to create deed restricted housing for low to moderate income individuals. That's exactly what we're doing. We're addressing these issues.
How many though?
Fifteen percent inclusionary.
Who, who is that sir, fifteen percent? More than half the city is on the poverty level or three percent, I think it's thirty-four percent of Asbury's poverty level. How is fifteen percent set aside? Well, how's the other fifteen thousand people? And I'll tell you the truth, like me, I'm a senior. If I ever wanted to move from the sand tender, say I wanted to rent a place in Asbury, I'd be looking at two to three thousand a month for one bedroom. Now, is that not a reality or am I not in reality? What's the reality? What's the real reality? How you make it sound altruistic, like we're trying to help everyone. And then you go out and you see people are, their clothes, their furniture's thrown out in the street. Where does, the city manager says rubber meets the road. The rubber meets the road when you see all the people sleeping in the street that can't eat, can't rent a place, and can't afford to even get a lease. You know what it takes to get a lease here now? You have to have a, a, a seven ninety credit score. You have to show that you've earned, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars for the last thirty years. Please. That's my question.
Does that have to do with?
This is why I cost so much.
This.
So, why would I be provided by both professionals with the list of communities that they did that in? And I don't want to have to vote.
You will not. We just gave it to you.
This was, this was sworn testimony, Mr. McNolay.
Sworn testimony.
I'll tell you, that's as wrong as when the deal for this redevelopment was signed in two thousand and two. Remember what happened, the person who signed it. Anthony signed it, they were arrested.
Thank you, Mr. McNolay.
Okay. Can we please stick with questions, please?
Regarding to the affordable housing element.
Uh, right now, um, uh, Michael, I understand in Little Ferry, they had a builder's remedy clause because of not having a, 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 a housing plan. And I think that case went on for about five years. Can you tell us what the cost of that legal lawsuit and what was the outcome?
I don't think that's relevant today because in Little Ferry, there was a gentleman who owned hundreds, if not a couple thousand, rental units that would litigate everything under the sun. And that had started way before I was there. So, I don't know what the true cost of that was. There was a settlement at one point that I remember, but I don't remember what the cost was of that because that was litigation that I think went on for almost a decade.
But it was substantial, so.
It's nothing compared to what we would see here because of that gentleman. The gentleman, um, once had told me he had ten thousand rental units with a five percent vacancy and all his units were actually paid for from his father. So, all he did was sue for sport.
No, 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 but I'm.
So, I, I can't tell you what the actual cost was because it was ongoing for years, before I got there and after I left.
But there, there is probability that you could have lawsuits. So, if we don't actually do this right, we want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves into.
We can get sued for anything by anybody. I, you can't, there's, there's no way to say that.
It, it, no, it has happened. What I'm saying.
It happens everywhere, yes.
Yeah, so right now, litigation is a focal point. So, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I, I think that you're, you're mistaken because when you get to a point of you thinking you're right, they might not think you're right. We might not think you're right. And then litigation starts. So, to try to do something to stem litigation, I think, is just folly because you're going to wind up getting sued. You should do your policy what is the best interest of the municipality as a whole and try to work with everyone. But regardless of that, you don't know who's going to sue over what reason whatsoever.
No, but I'm saying in, in that person actually won in that, in that settlement, I think the two thousand fifteen, I think, final judgment. But what I'm saying is, it's better to negotiate and get down to that point instead of looking at arbitrarily litigation.
Okay.
Can you please inform or inform me, what exactly does affordable housing mean? And clarify it between median income, affordable, and low income. Can you, can clarify it, please?
Yeah, okay. So, when we talk about affordable housing here in New Jersey, it means something very specific. And sometimes it means something different than how it might be defined in other states. So, in New Jersey, we have a very particular system. So, here in Asbury Park, just like in every community around New Jersey, when we talk about affordable units, what we're specifically referring to are units that are affordable to households that meet the low and moderate income limits. Low and moderate income is based upon a percentage of that region's median income that I cited before. So, in Asbury Park, we are part of the region that comprises Monmouth, Ocean, and Mercer County. The state, generally speaking, the state defines the median income. And then from there, we're able to define low and moderate income. With moderate income meaning not more than eighty percent of the median income, down to fifty-one percent and then, or fifty percent. And then low income defined as not more than fifty percent of median income. So, all told, affordable housing is up to and including eighty percent of the region's median income.
Thank you. But for laypeople who don't know that, could you give like specific numbers?
Numbers, yeah. Okay, so furthermore, the income limits are based upon the number of people in the household. So, as you might expect, as the more, as the more people in the household, the more, the more children you might have, for example, the higher that median income, the higher the permitted income limits for low and moderate. So, I'm going to give a couple of examples. So, if you're a moderate income household, let's say there are three people. So, it might be one parent and two kids or two parents and, and one kid. The maximum moderate income, this is back from two thousand and eighteen, it hasn't been updated for two thousand and nineteen yet, but the maximum moderate income for that three-person household is about seventy-one thousand dollars. The maximum low income for that, for a three-person household is about forty-five thousand dollars. And then included within the low income is a very low income category. It's just, it's a subset. It's not more than thirty percent of median income, and that's cited in the housing element. So, let me give that as well. The maximum very low income, again, for a three-person household is about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, for that three, for that three-person household, it ranges, uh, the maximums for, for very low, low, and moderate range between seventy-one thousand and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year.
And for, you put in, in special to Asbury is, um, middle income?
Right, and in, uh, middle income, again, for that same three-person household, uh, because we're, this housing plan includes middle as part of affordable generally, that income for the three-person household would, would increase to roughly a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so we have medium, uh, medium income of a hundred and seven thousand.
It's, um, no, it's, uh, it's maximum.
Maximum.
Income limits for middle income.
Maximum, in, in, maximum.
Yeah, maximum for middle income and then there's maximum for moderate and so forth.
So, the maximum for middle income is a hundred and seven thousand. And the maximum for.
Yes, for a three-person household, but yes.
For a three-person household, maximum for a, um, moderate is the next level down, correct?
Yes, at seventy-one.
At seventy-one.
Yep.
And then the maximum for, um, low income.
Yep.
Is, um, twenty.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Yep.
And then for low income is.
For very low.
For very low income.
That's the twenty-seven.
Is twenty-seven.
Yep.
Um, is there minimums?
For very low, is it like zero?
Well, no, for affordable, there's a minimum for affordable.
There's no, there's no minimum, I, I mean, to qualify for, uh, for moderate income, you have to exceed the low income. But there's no specific, uh, minimum income, really what's necessary when you go through, if you're a, if you're a, a household that hopes to qualify for affordable housing. In order to qualify, you have to submit, submit all your income documentation and so forth. The effective minimum income is the finding that you can, you, your household can afford the, the housing units. So, in the affordability rules, it requires that a household not spend more than thirty percent of their monthly income on housing costs. So, if in order to afford a particular apartment, you would have to spend, say, fifty percent of your monthly income, you would not qualify, you would ascend, you would have, essentially have an income that's too low for that housing unit. So, that's, that's how the minimum effectively works, but it's, it's a little convoluted because there's no, there's no table that I could present that shows not only the maximums, but the minimums, minimums as well. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear, but.
No, I, I, I get, I think I get it. You're saying that if you don't, if, if you have to spend more than a third of your yearly income on.
Less, less than a third.
Less than a third.
Yeah.
Of your, um, income on housing, then you won't be able to qualify. So, say in a, a place like, um, Asbury where the, it says that the, says the medium is thirty-three thousand, um, thirty-four-ish household income, right, thirty-four thousand is, then middle class is about forty thousand like the mayor said, right? So, it's saying that, I don't think that anyone would be able to qualify here in, in that guideline because they won't be able, a teacher wouldn't be able to afford the median in this town. Because that will take about twenty, close to twenty thousand of their income to, for a, even if it's fifteen hundred a month?
But if a, if a teacher has an income of, let's say, I, I'm just choosing the low income number, of forty-five thousand dollars a year, they should qualify for a low income unit.
A low income unit?
Yeah.
Because Neptune's base teacher's salary is about thirty-eight and Asbury's a little bit higher. I guess we'll qualify because the average teacher here comes in about fifty-six thousand a year. So, they'll be right in a moderate.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Andrea Goldman. I live on Seventh. My question is, what are you doing to help people of lower incomes afford housing outside of any court or state mandated? outside of any court or state mandated obligations?
The entire plan is actually outside of the city's affordable housing obligation. So most municipalities in the state have what's referred to as a prior round or third round obligation. And that's a number of units that must be provided. And that's different, if you remember from the earlier presentation, I talked about a rehabilitation obligation. The city has that. But there are these two other components of obligations that more than 90% of municipalities across the state have as well. Asbury Park doesn't have that obligation. Those obligations are zero. So all of this inclusionary housing goes above and beyond what the, what the city is required, is required to do in order to meet its affordable housing obligation.
So why is there all this fighting about it then, if this is something you're opting into?
I don't know.
I'm just saying, like, if it's, if everyone is saying that they're on board with it, why is there all this arguing? Why don't you just do it?
The answer, this is part of the public process. I mean, we hear from constituents about...
Right, no, I understand that, but hasn't this been part of the public process for over four years?
Two years, we started this in Jan, in March of 17.
March of 17.
Okay, so how long is this expected to take before you make a decision?
Hopefully about five more minutes.
And what are you going to do if you do decide? I'm just, I mean, I'm just saying, like, I, there's people being kicked out all the time. So what is the number of people that you want to lose who are supposed to be covered by all of these policies that you say you're opting into? I mean, what's the number that you have to lose before you guys act?
We'd like to act tonight.
Okay, so what are you leaning toward then? Like, what are you thinking? Is that unreasonable to ask them?
We'd have, we'd have to vote.
Okay, so...
I think the ask from the staff level is this. A plan should be the 30,000-foot level. Whatever the planning board recommends or adopts tonight, once the ordinances are started to be written, and that covers then, what, 15, or 5, or 10, or 20, or 12 percentages are, that's where we're really going to be hitting, hitting the aspects of what it is. So for me, from the planning side is, let us have options to do things. The plan as presented presents options for today, tomorrow, five and 10 years from now, and lets us start doing the options of creating that Affordable Housing Trust Fund, going to the courts for all their approval to get the fund obligated, and start the process of issuing an RFP or an RFQ to bring in the consultants to write the ordinances that will actually impact people's daily lives.
So am I hearing that basically you're just congratulating yourself on doing something you don't necessarily have to do? So you just keep lowering the number? Even though everybody seems to be, all the people the most affected seem to be saying 20% is the percentage, but you just keep lowering it? And you're saying that because it's not an obligation, it's okay?
No, not at all.
Then, can you clarify that then? Why, why, why wouldn't you do 20%? Why would you do anything lower for people who don't even live here?
Well, because, first of all, keep in mind that this is for projects that haven't even happened yet.
No, I understand, and we're not supposed to look at the past, I get that. So we're looking forward to the people who still definitely then haven't moved here, right?
No, not necessarily, it's people that can move within the city.
So the people who already make that amount who live here, we're looking at them?
Can you repeat that, please?
The people who then do live here who already make enough, you're looking, you're concerned about them?
If you're qualified, you're qualified.
Right, so I'm saying, why would you not do 20% for the very low, low, and low to moderate? Why would you change that at all then?
Because you want to be able to, moving forward, just not, just for, in a month from now or a year from now, to have a diverse economic base to provide opportunities for people.
And don't we already have that?
No, we don't.
So you're very interested then in helping those people, but not the people who are struggling?
No, we're interested in helping everybody. And please, let me, please let me finish. And one of the things that I said in the very beginning of this process is that we are hearing from the development community that someone who's qualified today, in six months from now, might not be qualified. So we want to be able to provide a new housing stock for people who might make that $1 more.
What about the people you know about, who won't be able to do that?
They're also part of that process. Everyone is a part of the process.
You're just not as concerned about them?
If we weren't concerned, we wouldn't be doing this.
Well, because you're saying the development community, like they're part of the community? What about the people who live here?
You're misunderstanding.
Yeah, I think I am.
We're equally concerned about low and moderate income families.
Shouldn't you be more concerned about them?
What Beth alluded to is that as development continues in the city, we're going to, we're trying to avoid having very rich and very poor. That's kind of how we're looking at this. So the 5% set aside that she's talking about is for the people that fall in the middle. The 50% for the low and very low are for the people that are currently here that look to move around. And also for the people in the future that want to move here, there would be affordable housing for them as well. So it's not that we're not, we don't care about them. We're trying to look at the entire community and see what the needs are down the road for the entire community.
So then I guess it kind of takes away from what this gentleman was saying, is that like, you're basically guaranteeing spots for people who are very rich. And that anything else is coming out of the people who are very poor, like he was saying. Is that maybe it should be reversed, where the standard is helping people who might be very poor, and then maybe some set asides for people who are very rich. And honestly, it makes me question your motivations when you say otherwise, when I don't really see them, why I have to argue about it? Like, I feel like I'm arguing with you. And I may think you know what I'm saying, right? Probably not as bad as the people who actually can't afford to be here. I'm saying, this is my first meeting, and I, give me a reason why not to feel disappointed with this. Okay.
The reason not to feel disappointed in this...
Yeah.
Is there's numerous steps in this process. Is that, one, if you look at what the rehabilitation figure is, as proposed under litigation that's happened statewide, we want to exceed that. So we want to improve the housing stock for the people who are already here. And we do that through various funding sources and through various programs. Two, we want to do this because it's the right thing to do. And for the people that are here today, and the people that are going to be here tomorrow across all income levels. As the plan states, as we've stated, there's no obligation for any one of us to sit in this room and have this discussion on how to help people. Other towns throughout the state of New Jersey fight what we're doing today. They, they fight developers, they sue developers. They don't want to provide affordable housing for people who are low income, very low income, or even moderate income. Here today, in the city of Asbury Park, we are one of the few that have actually said, we want to do this. And other municipalities across the state have reached out to us, reached out to Beth, reached out to Mr. Sullivan, to say, how are you doing it because we want to do what Asbury Park is doing? Because we're doing, in the planning process, what's right to help everyone. Other towns sue to do the exact opposite of what we're doing. We're embracing it, other towns run from it. So while I'm sorry you feel disappointed in the process, if you just do a quick Google search of what towns are doing, they're fighting this tooth and nail every day, and we're saying, we want to help everybody.
So this is embracing, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Because you're not as terrible as the other towns?
If you want to say that, fine.
Or maybe not as terrible, but because you're not suing like other towns are, this is embracing?
I would say that's the definition of embracing.
I guess I'll do some more Googling and come back with more questions.
Okay.
But Michael, also, I think we have to remember that we are not responsible how people feel.
Correct.
That's on the person themselves.
Really quickly, I just want to clarify a little bit. You said that you have to reevaluate in six months. I think reevaluation is, I think, once a year? But just like Housing Authority just told me, what they're doing, and can't we do it here in the city? Is that once you qualify, if you grow inside that qualification, you don't get booted out. You just grow inside the qualification. You only had to qualify when you first apply for it. And then there's growth inside of the qualification. So say if you, you come in and you meet the low income, but you go back to college and you get a great job and you go up, you know, $10,000 on your income. You don't reassess and get kicked out. You kind of just grow inside of that income. So that's what I was just told by the Director of Housing Authority. So why can't the city implement something similar?
That's true, if you, if you...
If you're in, you're in.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you're in, you're in. If you buy a housing unit, you don't have to sell it just because your income rises. If you get a lease in an affordable unit, you don't have to leave just because, just because your income rises.
Okay, so I was just scared because Michael was saying, you know, when you reevaluate in six months, then, you know, you don't qualify and people won't. So say if they go from medium, medium...
You're mixing apples and oranges.
I think the distinction, if you don't mind, is people get qualified, a lot of times folks will get qualified before they get into a unit in order to get onto a waiting list. So if, let's say, in February, you get qualified, you get placed on a waiting list. And then in, I don't know, August, the unit becomes available, they're going to recheck your income. If between February and August, your income has risen above the income limits, you'll no longer be eligible to live in that unit.
So in the process.
Yeah, you have to be in there, the lease has to be signed, you have to take ownership of the unit if that's the case.
If you get into a unit today, making X amount of dollars, and four years from now, you become CEO of your own company, making $4 million, you're still in that unit. It's when you close the door and go to sleep that first night, that's when it counts.
Ernest McNolly, so again, what is the rush tonight? You seem like very urgent to pass this.
I can tell you, if you're referring to, if you're referring to me?
No, actually, I was talking to the city manager in the...
Okay, that's fine.
What's the urgency tonight to get this? I mean, you seem like, look, let's just get this done, and we'll worry about the details and the shortcomings later. Why don't we worry about it now and not get it done? What's the urgency? That's a simple question. Why does it need to get passed tonight? Why? There's too many people not happy with this. The only people smiling here are the city attorneys and everyone up that end. All of us homeowners and residents here.
Are you referring to me?
What?
I'm not the city attorney, I'm the board.
I wasn't even talking to you.
Well, there's another city attorney here. Well, you said the city attorney, he's not here.
What?
He's not here.
Well, I wasn't, I don't even know what you're talking about.
I don't know what that, I don't know what you're talking about.
So then why did you interrupt me?
Because you made a statement, that's what. Never mind, this is rhetorical, continue on.
Okay.
We'll be here.
You want me to clarify? I go to all the meetings. I go to the, I go to the council meetings, and I watch the smiles on everyone here, on the boards, the engineers and everyone. It seems to me that the happiest people here in all these meetings are when you're accomplishing what you want to accomplish. Forget what 15,000 residents here want, we don't matter. We just pay the taxes and are on for the ride what you tell us. And you come in with fuzzy math, fuzzy statistics, you make statements that you can't clarify, and then you say, well, we're experts, we did it in Scotch Plains. What does Scotch Plains got to do with Asbury Park? And then you make a statement that this is a role model city? With who? A role model city?
Is there, is there a question that you'd like answered?
Yes.
What's that?
How are we a role model for housing? You make the statement.
That really has nothing to do with this application. It has nothing to do with this application or passing this application.
The city manager said that, based on what he's done, what the professional involved, what we've done in other places, and what's being done here, that we really don't even have to do it. You should really be happy we're even in doing it for you. What is it that would make a city board say, well, you know, we'll do it, we don't have to. Maybe we'll give you like 15% set aside. Question is, where? And at what price? And then when anybody asks you specifics, you say, well, we'll have time to modify that later. So my question is, why the rush tonight to pass this? What's the reason?
This has, this process has been going on since when, 2017?
March.
March of 2017.
So what?
And, and every time that we, this has come back actually from November 26th or something like that, in that area has come back again. It's part of the normal process. Now, if there's, if there's, the board, after hearing everything, they have to take a vote. And whatever the vote is, that's what the vote is. And it's been brought in front of us, and it's scheduled normally as it would for, as any other application is scheduled.
Yeah, except for the fact that the boards in Asbury are proving things that most residents, and I know a lot of residents, don't like. So what's happening is, the city manager and team and boards are putting through things that we don't want, but we can't seem to stop it, no matter what we do. It's like you've got a runaway train here. And tonight's an example. I could tell when I walked in that your sole motivation is to pass this by offering us a bone and saying, look, if you don't like parts of it, you have an opportunity later to go through a process. And that's not good enough, you shouldn't even pass it. That's my question, why the rush?
I've already actually answered that, so we'll move on.
Asbury's not going anywhere, and you don't see any housing getting any better. So maybe this plan isn't the answer. So is there a rush?
I've already answered that question.
Okay.
I've already answered the question.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Questions, public questions.
Yeah, we have another party.
Questions, public questions.
Okay, now we need a motion to open for public comment, and that is restricted to three minutes.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, just a second, we need to set up the three-minute timer. You could do it on your watch if you like. Okay, as soon as he's got the three minutes, I can do the gavel. Okay. All right, oh, we've got, we've got the clock. We're all set? Okay?
Do you swear affirm testimony, give your statements will be the truth, or keep the knuckles up to the tree?
Yes.
State your name again for the record.
Tracy Rogers. For numerous points that I made tonight, of one, having a mini, middle income of one person of $84,000, when we've had many so displaced, is not the answer. And no, no information provided from up there, which is all speculative, as to what we think we're going to have. But this round has gone from 2015 to 2025, which we're all, we're almost through. And in that time, we've lost many, many residents from in affordability. And right now, if you look at over 15 years, we've created more market rate units all over the city, almost 4,000, and we're actually looking to bring more at the waterfront. So right now, these are questions, and first I want to say that the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition has worked with the city, and we still want to continue. And right now, the only thing we ask is for two things. And that is to keep it at very low, low, and moderate for the 20%, and add 5% to the Central Business District. I think if we take one month, if we go and sit down, I think a lot of people are seeing that, that we can make this. And if anything else goes back, we can revisit it. This process of just pushing it through and speculative doesn't work. And I'm talking about, like I said, the many residents that have been pushed out, the residents who are working in the Beer Garden, the many restaurants, over 15, almost 2,000 people on Cookin' Avenue who work, and other people around the city. So the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition is kindly asking you not to vote this up, to set it aside for one month, and let's go to a final evaluation, just to get those two points. And I think us working together, we can actually do this and come up with a suitable plan that meets everybody's needs.
Maureen Nevin.
Maureen Nevin, D.L.A. Court.
Just one second.
What's that?
Just one second, you have to be sworn in.
I do.
Thank you.
Again, my concern is the incentives. I think to, I'm not clear on whether there is an actual formula that you're using that distinguishes, say, if somebody's going to give up 5% of their building to affordable housing as opposed to 20% of the units to affordable housing, they get to go up one floor or two floors or three floors. Or their tax break is going to be such and such a percent of their profits. Maybe you could clarify that. I won't hold you up for that. But, you know, Michael said something interesting tonight. Said several interesting things.
Thank you, Maureen.
Sure, you're welcome. He said, we want to do this because it's the right thing to do. And then I would say, why shouldn't the redevelopment part of our community, call them the developer community that we're working with, why shouldn't they offer whatever percentage of units wherever they want to build as affordable housing because it is the right thing to do? I would ask that the board consider that. And, you know, if we have to change this incentive thing, then maybe it's time that that took place. Thank you.
Do you swear affirming testimony during these proceedings to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Felicia Simmons.
Thank you.
I swear this is the last time. First is, tonight, the last time.
I was going to ask, do you mean forever?
Tonight. First is, I think we have to be very aware that we're making a protective class of a family of one at $83,000 a year. That's very fearful to make set asides and protect it. To say that we're a city protecting the $83,000 a year is fearful to me as a Asbury Park. Knowing that I live in Monmouth County, one of the wealthiest counties in New Jersey, I kind of, I'm aware that Asbury is an anomaly, and I kind of would like it to stay an anomaly. Pretty much, I want to live here. And I want someone who makes $83,000 to be able to live here too and not be considered, not well off. Because anywhere else in the country, I know New Jersey's weird, but anywhere else in the country, if you make $83,000 a year, you're doing pretty well. But to be considered a protected class in Asbury, that's a little bit fearful. And second, there are certain sticking points to pretty much, I want to say thank you for the planning board and the city for working with the Affordable Housing Coalition. This has been an awesome experience, and I'm very, very respectful and appreciative of the time and effort that the planners and the board people have taken in this, and city manager.
Thank you, Felicia.
I just want to say that, you know, you started in March, we started in August of the year before. Talking about this, but there are certain points that are important just in the basis of it. The, that extra 5% is important. Even though, to be honest, that's the moderate side. You know, I was pushing for 40% and 35%. So know that, that I was pushing for 40% and 35%, so to get me down to 20% and 15% was a big push. But that 5% is important to us. And the timeline and that extra time in when we draw up these ordinance, so this, this process, this work that you've done isn't in vain because without the ordinance that go along with it, then these two years and another year and a half, there's no reason we can't do it accelerated version and do these ordinance within a couple of months of one another. So we can start off running and not just have another piece of a document with blood, sweat and tears sitting up on the shelf, and your work is respected. And that's pretty much it. If it passes tonight, I wanted to ask the lawyer, is it possible for those certain sticking points to have a resolution by the planning board tonight to say amendment or noted or something in that manner so it can give that extra oomph to that 5%? Or does it have to go down and come back up? Or can the board do a resolution saying, well, we want the 5% or we want that changed? Or does it have to be completely rebooted?
I understand your question. Planning board, when the presentation is over, should have a discussion. They can make comments and recommendations. Planning board is of a mindset, because the planning board adopts the master plan and the various amendments to the master plan. So if the planning board sees fit to change something, and they have the data behind it, you know, the factual data to support the changes, they can do that.
They can do that tonight.
They can do it tonight or another day.
Okay.
Carry it to the end.
Okay, all right. So thank you, that's just my ask. So if tonight, if you wanted to add that five and change that, you could, just saying that. All right, thank you.
I do.
State your name again for the record.
Ernest Mingholy, 400 D.L.A. Drive, Asbury Park. So now it's coming. Well, my comment is, I would hope that you do not pass this in a rush tonight. I think that, like myself, who I consider pretty involved in the city, I don't think there's 12 people in this city that know what's going on here. And that's not good. Typically, you come to the meetings here, there's almost no one here. So what's happening is, like, the factions that be are deciding for all kinds of people who then find out three weeks later in the paper, oh, don't you know, they passed 15% affordable housing. The concept of affordable housing is really relegated to a group that's struggling, usually poverty, et cetera, et cetera. What's, Asbury Park has too many housing units. There's too many. There's only 15,000 people here. Why do we keep building condos? Who are they for? They're for out-of-towners. What kind of out-of-towners? Big money, people that come here, they have no kids in the school system. They don't vote here, but they just want to invest and flip and make money. Well, at whose expense? The rest of us. We're running out of kids, we're running out of neighborhoods. There's nothing for just plain old middle-class and lower-income people here. All the events are geared to glitzy things, expensive things, you know, $50 drinks and dinners, and what about the rest of us? And, you know, it doesn't make sense that our own city, our own city seem to always be doing things that we don't want. Now, I say, how does that happen? Well, look, you have, am I allowed to say we have a non-resident city manager? I think he's the first one. Two times, right? Per city manager that doesn't live here. Right? And then sells that house and buys another house out of the city. So apparently, he doesn't want to live in this city. I don't blame him in a lot of ways, with the crime and the real data. And I keep hearing here that you say, if I, I'm allowed to say, you already mentioned, you said, they have all the data, they haven't showed us any data. You know, you keep kicking numbers around, income and et cetera. You flip between your $85,000 and our $30,000. Ours is more, definitely more. I mean, I study data. $35,000 is high for this city. That's not even counting the poverty rate here. Where are all these people in poverty going to go? Where are they going to go? The city should be spending time on infrastructure, economy, businesses, rebuild schools, rebuild firehouse. We don't need more people here. Who needs more condos? For what? For who? Who are these things for? Doesn't make sense. Ocean Club? The bottom level is $1 million? Who's that for? The top level is $6 million. All right, Mr. Bruce Springsteen, how about you move in? Wait, I still have 10 seconds there. Miss Van Wagenen. You just took 10, okay. I would request that you not pass the, at least tonight.
Move to close public comment?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any, any comments from the board?
Well, I'd just like to start off by thanking everyone for their public comments, and in particular, the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition. I think you've been really instrumental in the whole process. I know you'll continue to be involved. This is one step in the overall process. And should continue to be vigilant at every step, whatever happens tonight. So thank you all. Thank you for your continued involvement.
I totally agree, and I'd like to thank the professionals working on this. It's a hard task. It's hard to understand at times. Like I say, I'm torn like I'm like 50/50, so however I vote is not a reflection on the great job you did. Thank you.
I need clarification. All right, so if we vote tonight to go forward, but there are changes that we want to see in the plan, what happens?
So if, by voting to go forward, I'm going to assume you mean that the planning board adopts the housing plan. If there's a change of heart or something along the lines in the future, there are two choices that the city has. First, the planning board can undertake an amendment to the housing element and set forth alternative policies, so, which is essentially changing the language of the text of the plan. So that's one way. And then that new policy would presumably dictate or inform, I should say, future council actions. Alternatively, if there's that change of heart at the council level, or if the council makes that decision first, the council can always, in its implementation of the housing element, meaning adoption of these ordinances, can adopt, can introduce and/or adopt ordinances with some different language. So if I was going to highlight the most significant issue raised this evening, which is the middle-income housing, the planning board, if you so chose, you could amend the housing element in the future to adjust all these percentages addressing or not middle-income housing. Or alternatively, the council, when it decides to introduce ordinances, it could adjust if and how middle-income housing is being provided. It's not, it's not unheard of to have a council adopt an ordinance that's inconsistent with the master plan, and that is a process that can be followed here in Asbury Park.
So the first step is, once you adopt, or adopt this into the master plan, is then I immediately start putting together the RFP to hire the consultant to start drafting the ordinances. And that would take probably about a week or two. We'd go out for probably a month. And at that point, we're still in the budget process, so we would see what we can and cannot do financially. At the same time, concurrently, Beth and the city attorney, Fred Raffetto, not Mr. Serpikow, will be working through the court system to get a declaratory judgment, which we anticipate being six to nine months. So at that point in time, we're going to try to do it as a dual track to get something adopted by the end of the year. That includes the inclusionary and the declaratory judgment. So this is still another six to 18 months worst-case scenario away. As Beth said, once it goes before the council, those numbers can change. Legally, in my opinion, that you would have, the city would have a better chance of winning any litigation if you say 10%, we're just saying a just flat number of 10%, and the council adopts something that's higher. Well, that's going to be a challenge. It's always better to go lower. So with this, this is a high number. And if the council wants to get rid of it, or we can justify it better in court, in my opinion.
Understand the process. Process of amendments to this. You don't undertake this of your own initiative. Typically, it's either going to be on a cyclical thing, six years, whatever it is.
Ten years.
Excuse me, 10. A 10-year renew, a 10-year renew of the master plan. You look at the entire master plan. In the interim, it would have to come as a request from the governing body for you to review a certain element of your master plan. You just don't decide on your own to undertake a review.
So we're required at a minimum of 10 years to review the master plan?
Correct. Let's put Michael under oath first.
So couldn't we say within a year? I have the opinion that the 20% and the 50% are good because I think the reality is the very low, low and moderate income needs are present. But that's not to say I understand the issue with the middle income down the road at some point. Can we, can we say, okay, we want to adopt this with these changes, say 20% and 50%, but then we'd like to look at it in a year or two years to reassess what we've done?
Oh, that would be so he doesn't get.
We need to.
Before he answers.
Yes.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Gaten, his board plan. In terms of the reexamination, you could do it every six months if you'd like, but I don't suggest that. And I don't suggest that you have to fine tune the master plan, the housing plan element to such an extent that you, you bind the governing body to enacting exactly the numbers and things that are talked about here. You need to leave some latitude, and Michael talked about this. He said, this is the higher-level law. As those ordinances are built and they're refined, it may be that you just deal with the low, moderate, and very low, and then the median income or the middle income is dealt with subsequent to that when you look at the numbers a little bit more differently. But don't feel like this is the last step.
But if we approve what's in here for 15%, can that increase at the reexamination, like you say?
Well, you can always change it within the master plan framework. But by leaving it that way, if the governing body decides, well, it says 15% in there, but as we've gotten to the ordinances, we want to make it 17% or 20% or something, it doesn't make it inconsistent. It makes it maybe somewhat inconsistent or not exact. It's not substantially inconsistent. So that's an important distinction when you're looking at ordinances. And they would refer that ordinance back to you as a planning board, and you would look at the housing plan and the ordinance and say whether it's consistent or not and to what degree.
So will all these ordinances that are going to be written come back to us?
Yes.
They're all going to come back to us anyway?
That's correct.
So if we, I know.
And to public comment.
And to public comment?
And city council public comment.
And you're all welcome?
And city council public comment during the adoption portion.
Except for Felicia, she's in.
She's done forever.
All development regulations prior to adoption by the governing body must be forwarded under the review powers to the planning board for review and confirmation.
All right, so.
Consistency with the master plan and such other things as you deem relevant.
So the sticking, oh, go ahead. Would you like to go?
I have another question. So while we're doing this, when does this plan go to, for the court to be approved? And if it's approved, and at the same time, the governing body is making tweaks to the plan, what happens?
Well, the governing body can't tweak the plan. You would, you would develop the ordinances. So don't use tweak there, use develop the ordinances. We would start, Beth and the city attorney, Fred Raffetto, would start, they would have a conversation as soon as possible. And then from our side, from the staff side, we start putting together the RFP to hire the consultant to do them at the same time.
Like, I don't want to put us in a position where we've approved this, and then we write an order and say, well, after some thought, we'd like it to be this, and then we're constrained that we can't do that because the.
Go big. And if the courts have to change it, then during, Beth and I talked about during the ordinance process, is that you, we can get to that point in the draft of the ordinance, just not having the numbers in them. And that's where you get, that's internal operations for us.
And I have a procedural question for you. You take this, develop it, Beth, Fred, Raffetto take it to the courts for approval. With the percentages that are in there currently, if the court approves that with that percentage in, can you later on change that percentage in an ordinance if the court has.
Right, to a higher number?
I think if we. I think if we, if the low and moderate income household percentage was reduced, we would have to go back to the court. If we were going to increase it, perhaps there's an argument that you should have to go back to the court to seek their approval. But quite honestly, I'm not sure who exactly would, would seek to enforce the original judgment. It certainly wouldn't be Fair Share Housing Center. And the city would be making, would be the party making the changes.
Who's going to say, don't do more?
I'm just asking a question, I don't know the answer because I don't do that part of the law.
And back to the original question I asked a while ago about the changing the percentages for middle income, that is also part of the ordinance or?
Yes. So that can be done as part of the ordinance. When they, when the council, after the process Michael described, goes ahead and starts the process of developing the ordinances, the council, the first thing they're going to do, I would recommend, is you look to what does the housing element say? And then that should dictate the, the draft of the ordinance. But that said, the council still has the opportunity to read the housing element and say, you know, I'd really like to change the set aside. Or I, because there are, there's a lot of decision making that the council will have to make. We certainly haven't provided draft ordinances or provided the details. So there's a lot of decision making the council has to go through. And as part of that, if it, if it makes a decision that it would like to adjust these set asides, these percentages, it can do so at that time.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I'm saying, I'm thinking.
Right, so, so go ahead.
My only concern is if we approve something tonight and it goes before a judge?
Yes.
And says, yes, but at the same time, we're using ordinances and we're passing them and we're making changes that, I mean, this is, we've been doing this for a long time. We're trying to get it done. And, and one of the reasons I'd like to pass it tonight is so we can start moving forward. Because right now, developers can come in and do whatever and we don't have anything in place.
Right.
I'd like to get something in place so we can start protecting and developing some affordable housing.
Right, so, so I think that it's, it really does come down to, and I, I think that, I'm still trying to get clarity on it, even though I'm sure you're very clear. But I just, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to get to the fact that we have, I think that there are a couple of sticking points that we're talking about. They have to do percentages. So whether they have the CBD, whether we want to increase that by 5% or is that something? Is that something that we can pass what it is today? And when the ordinance comes, through, we can say, yes, that that's what we meant and that's what we want.
So we'll go through this all again when the ordinance?
When, on each ordinance?
It's introduced, it comes, it gets referred to you. And then after you make your recommendations, or through the public comment process, it goes to the council for their adoption, for another public comment process. So if things change during this process and you want to say CBD 20% and zero or zero and 20%, that's the process.
The difference is what you do here now with the master plan is within your power. When you get the ordinance back, if it's something different, you are only looking at that under your review powers. It's non-binding.
Unless it's inconsistent with the master plan.
It's not, it's not binding on, it's not necessarily binding on the mayor and council.
Or is this a recommendation from the planning board that we think that it should be changed?
Exactly.
But, but Jack, it's really a consistency review.
Yeah.
You're not really being asked whether you like it or not.
It's consistent. I said that earlier. It's a consistency review with the master plan and other sound principles of planning. But here, you are the one that's adopting this amendment. The governing body doesn't adopt the master plan, the planning board does.
I, I don't see how. And Beth, you did a great job. And wrote down all the towns you worked for.
Do you have a list?
But I don't see how, we're in the district that represents Mercer, Mohammed, and Ocean. I don't see how we can overturn that. I don't see any judge in America saying, hey, guess what? You know, Camden tried to overturn theirs and we said no. So it's probably case history, whatever, that's.
No, I would say that's not within, within the realm of possibilities that you would be able to change.
So Yvonne's question, can we change the number for middle income? Which is 83,000.
I'm sorry, I, what I, maybe I misunderstood you. My point was, I don't think the city has the ability to change how median income is calculated.
I totally agree.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Just the middle income, we can change?
Yeah, middle income is within your peer view, yes.
70 to 90% of the median income.
Yeah, correct. But, but the median income and then low and moderate, that's, that's got to be state regulated.
Okay.
And as much as we're all saying, we can change this, we can change that, we can change this, we can change that, we can do this this month, we can do this six months, we can do that. We know what we have today. We have very few, if any, middle class. We have lower class that we're trying to help and trying to help. So when we can change this, be it six months from now, five years from now, whatever, when we can change it, that's when I would rather reduce it than try to increase it. So why not start at the higher? Make that recommendation to the council and then go from there.
Are you saying the higher for like, like the 20% of the CBD?
20, 20%.
20% low and mod.
Right, just because, again, theory wise, you're absolutely right. But number wise, you crunch the numbers and the numbers for Asbury Park just are not there when you look at them. I mean, the family, medium, below the medium income family is $43,000. And we're talking about $83,000 for one person. Where the family in Asbury Park is 43. And there's many, many, many below 43. So I'm, I'm going to be, just like I was at the beginning, I'm for like doing the 20 and getting it over with.
Right, and, and the other thing that I would consider is that are we going to say that for when we were talking about middle income? Because right now, it's like, what is it, to 120%? What was that? How much?
120, between 80 and 120.
80 and 120? And like what the mayor was saying was like, you know, or actually Rick said it was like 70 to 90. Does that, or, does it make sense for us to do that now?
Well, I, I would, I would argue that I think having middle income represented in our housing plan does make a statement about where the city wants to go. And that is to have a balance of housing, to have housing options that people can move up in social status. So I, I would hate to see the city just have only, you know, second homes for the wealthy and, and low income households. I think we need to have a balance. So I think having a statement in there about middle income housing is, is not a bad thing. Now, whatever the number is, is what it is.
Right, but that's, I think that that's what we're, that's what we would have to say is that what is the number? As opposed to having?
No, council would have to, council would have to say that.
You don't have to be as specific as you think in this document. That's going to happen with the ordinance.
So that's what I'm getting confused about, is to what's the ordinance and what is this? So if we say that we would like the low and middle and moderate to be 20%, we can say that today. Right? Yes, okay. Hold on, hold on. So we say, so if we said that and then the whole middle income thing, because I agree that we have to have something in there for middle income. It's just a question of the numbers.
Yep.
So if those numbers are the responsibility of the council versus, versus the planning board, are we okay with that?
I think we would make a recommendation.
No, we can make a recommendation to do that. Yes.
So we're stuck with this 20%. I mean, why does it have to be 20%? I mean, can't it be 20% of low and moderate and then 5% middle? I mean, why is, why is 20% the only number?
It's not stuck. Well, 20% affordable housing set aside is essentially the standard set aside in the state.
So if we did that for low and moderate, but then since middle income, we don't get any credit for that anyway.
We could say?
Say 5%.
So it would be 20% plus 5? So, okay, so hold on, let me talk about this for a moment. One of the things that we did in this plan was we tried to calibrate the, that compensatory benefit that give or that incentive to the developer with the set aside. So if we're talking about increasing, you're, you're basically talking about increasing the set asides. You're requiring more low and moderate income units, more middle, more units for middle income above and beyond the 20%. I think it calls into question whether or not those compensatory benefits remain adequate. Does additional density, for example, need to be given if we're talking about reserving an additional 5% of the units for low and moderate income housing? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head because it needs to be asked for, for each district that we adjust.
Would, would an option be to say that as a, as a master plan element, we recommend 20% affordable housing, low, moderate, middle income? At least 15% of that has to be low, moderate. And then within that 5%, you could say 1%, 2%, 3%?
You're splitting the difference more or less.
Middle.
But that's not helping what's, again, that's.
And that's largely what the plan, the plan largely requires 15% low and moderate income throughout all these districts, plus 5, plus another 5% for middle income. So it's a total restricted units of 20%, but just 15% for low and moderate. I think what the planning board is potentially contemplating is bringing, is changing the set asides to be an entirety of 20% for, for low and moderate. And then not middle income at all, or at least in some of these districts. So the planning board, one thing I do want to be clear about is we include goals and objectives in this housing element. And one of them is to provide middle income housing. So if your, if your middle income set asides are adjusted in your individual zone recommendations, it's not as if that policy is eliminated. You still have the goal stated in here. And that goal is still available to help inform the council when it adopts ordinances, you know, soon for this first round of implementation or at any point in the future.
So earlier you said that, so we did the 20% low and moderate. And then we have this 5% middle income. So you said earlier that like for middle income, a one and three bedroom apartment would be like 2,200 to 3,100. That's pretty high. So I mean, it seems like the middle income depends on market rate anyway. I don't think Asbury has built much of that except maybe for like these select zones. So it seems like ruling out a 20% and a 5% because of compensatory incentives, doesn't, I mean, doesn't seem like it's really such an issue.
Well, it could be if, if no one builds it.
There's, I'm just entering a counter argument to that, which is that, so the market rate units are essentially subsidizing the affordable units. And so in order to make a pro forma, it's quite possible that you could be unintentionally raising the rents for all the other units because you have set a lower.
But if there's not, if they're not the people coming into the city to rent those apartments, they're not going to rent for that high. I mean, people are not going to move, oh, it's $4,000. Or move to Asbury Park.
Well, that, that's, that's where the, when we were putting these numbers together and we talked to members of the development community, as we just said, if you have someone at 2,700 and they're now subsidizing $400 worth, that $400 is either going to be raised on the rents or come off the city's revenue side of it, or split the difference somewhere. So we wanted to try to come up with a proposal that one, protected everybody, but also is palatable to development community to actually build something. And that's where the other aspect of it is, if there's too much regulation and it's too honorous on them to say 20% on a 40-unit project, you're not, it's not going to be built because the developer's not going to get their money back and they're not going to get their investment. And the investment community is not going to say, we're going to give you something because we want 6% and you're only getting 4. That's, that 40-unit project would require eight low, moderate income prop, units. So it's either they're getting more dense or it's 32 market rate raising the rate or the pro forma side of it. So when we were doing this, if you look, there's five or six inclusionary zones. So we were looking at where is the market going to be? And where do we think the market's going to be in the future? And then we also did the land use analysis, which is pretty easy to do, of vacant spaces and properties that actually could be redeveloped for a higher and better use, such as Asbury Avenue or Springwood Avenue. So those are the, the, the number fluctuations is because we were looking at where can development happen, new development, where could redevelopment happen? Where can rehab happen? That was, that was probably about three months of this whole process going back and forth.
My next issue?
Okay. Go ahead.
When I think of, when I think of middle class in Asbury Park, I'm thinking, you know, the firemen, the police.
Well, that's upper class.
What?
People who are not making the $80,000. You know, our middle income, I guess, would fall in the moderate income range. So if, if, if that's the case, I don't know, do we do middle income? I, or?
Certain percentages can be created.
Yeah, I, I want, I want to be able to provide for a city where a family can move in and where they can go into, you know, we can have children in our schools and it's, and it's a city that is truly diverse, you know, low, middle, and, and wealthy. But, and I don't know that we're doing that. I'm just.
Not at 83,000 for middle?
The middle income issue is related to percentages. And the 80 to 120, from what I'm gathering for us, seems too high. So we could evaluate that and determine based on our community, what we see as middle income and set those percentages based on that. Is that, or?
Is that a fair?
Or do they fall within the moderate, are they qualified as a moderate income housing?
If the city is concerned that the middle income limits are too high, then what I would recommend is you adjust that top figure of 120% downward. Don't, I don't, don't change how it's calculated, whether it's calculated on a city median income versus a, keep it simple and just bring the percentage down. You'll have the same effect in a more simplistic process.
How, how far down can we go?
You could go to 81%. But I, I would, I would recommend a bigger, a bigger section of percentages. You know, go down to 90 or 100% or 110%.
And what does that equate to dollars?
It could, would equate roughly to? So if we take that same middle inc, middle income household for a three-person middle income household right now, at 120%, it's at roughly 107. And at, and at 80% or the maximum of moderate, it's roughly $70,000. So we're talking about 30, another, roughly $40,000 between the two. So maybe if you were going to reduce that from 120% down to 100% of median income, it might be roughly $90,000, $92,000.
And that's still double, 43, 450.
I, it just.
I, I know, so, but we're, we're getting there, but we're never going to get there at that rate. So to me, it's like basically, no matter what, 80% is going to be paying market rate. So it's a question, do we want to fix 20% or fix 15%? Me, I want to fix 20%.
Yeah, I think fix 20 is a good number. It's realistic.
At this point in time, and I agree with Michael, we should have some language in there that we want a middle class and that can be reviewed in the future, blah, blah, blah. And when we get there, and hopefully we get there soon, that can be changed because everybody said this can be amended at any time, but right now.
Can we set that in the language of how we want removing it to?
No, that's through the regular review process.
Right now, you got to deal with the reality. Reality is like our numbers, socioeconomic are terrible.
Yes. But there's also the concern to keep this in mind. If nothing gets built, this whole process is moved.
I haven't seen a developer yet bulk at the 20%.
But if, but if we go forward, let's say if we go forward with the 20%, then like we said, that we can, when the, when the middle income does come, which will be probably over a year from now, if not longer than that, that at that point, the council can decide on that number. So, and it comes through here? Or?
Except that Beth's point early on is that it's not just that the middle income will come and then we decide. There is actually like giving forethought to it at this point, that it's not going to be attractive to, and/or, and I'm just going to put this out there, but if we really consider like, you know, not being exclusionary and housing as a universal right, like why are we excluding a whole class in our current considerations?
And remember, we're here today because no one thought to do this 10 years ago.
Understood, understood.
And the policy is your guys' call and the city council's call on the ordinance side. So we adapt to however the policies are. But our conversations with the development community is 20% was too high. Cause, cause they have to make their own money to build stuff.
First Avenue agreed to it. Michael's, not Michael's, uh, Interfaith agreed to it.
Well, remember though, Interfaith, Michaels and the Housing Authority all had tax credit programs tied to it.
First Avenue doesn't.
First, First Avenue, he had no problems with the 20% because he got the parking variances. So there was a compensatory.
There's ways, there's ways to give, to get the 20%, be it density, parking, other ways besides cutting off.
Yes, and as I've said, I don't think there's an issue where if the plan says 15% and someone comes in with a project and the city says, we want 20, no one's going to balk at providing more. But it's how do you prevent, how do you have the future of the middle income when people start to make more money and want to move within the city? That, that to me is, is the future. I don't want to be in a position where we are now, where there was never any planning for affordable housing, which caused the problems of today, especially with the convergence.
Again, Michael, like I said.
I know, it's, it's.
I can't argue with your logic and your logic is right 99 out of 100 cities, but to me, it's just not right in Asbury Park at this time of the state. And again, it's.
I don't disagree with you.
Right.
Is there a way ultimately down the road to structure and it's, let's just say we build in 20% low, low mod and then have incentives to go to 25% with 5% middle income? Because that's what you said, it basically has to be compensatory. So you could build it into the zoning ordinance that the, you're incentivizing additional middle income apartments, but that at a minimum, we're requiring 80, 20.
So right now, for example, if we take the Deal Lake Drive district, just as an example, right now, it's recommended that it be increased, the density be increased 10 units an acre in order to get that 15% set aside for low and moderate, plus 5% for middle. If the city wanted to provide incentive for middle income, to raise it to 20%, then provide incentive for middle income housing, it might be you get 60 units an acre for your low and moderate income housing and maybe you get, you know, 65 units an acre for, for middle income. That's a change to an ordinance, uh, that's an ordinance provision that we could incorporate in order to provide this option. I think you're referring to an optional incentive for the developer.
Yeah.
Jack, what's the process to amend the element to move forward?
To amend what's been presented?
Yeah.
Uh, typically you ask the presenters to go back, take your comments, draft amendments and present it. Add that and vote on it.
As opposed to us saying, no, no, just asking.
Or you could go the other way. You could try and draft it now or, and that's not going to probably work, or you could just say, this is what we want in there. Bring it back to, she's still not going to adopt a written resolution until the next meeting anyway. So it turns out to be kind of the same unless it's a burden or whichever is, whichever works for the city overall.
I think first we need to have a consensus on which direction to go.
Yeah, exactly. That, that's a good.
Right. So I mean, but we could, we could pass it and put these in the resolution.
Well, you want, well, you want whatever you want. You want Beth.
I need clarity.
As a planner to use the proper language. You don't want a lawyer doing it. You want a planner to.
Right.
I admit, handed it in. You know, you want it written in such a way that Beth, Beth's got a million, tons more experience than I can sort of. So you'd want it done by a professional planner and then incorporated and then make sure the language reads the way you want it to read. You vote on it. And you have a resolution adopting the plan. But you'd have to have a consensus, as Michael said, as to what, what exact, no, they got to tell you what they want, or you'll just be going at this forever.
I'm just, I'm not, I can't vote tonight anyway, but I just wanted to say the thing that seems, and I know I'm new to this piece of it, but the, the fact that that medium, the median income for Asbury Park is so out of step with what's here, with the region, which we know, we know that's a given and likely not changing that fast. I think that from just listening to everybody on the board, that that's the comfort level of not, um, I mean, all, all the other things are good, but when our middle, our middle is not, the middle that it sounds like the city and the public comment all wants to keep here is not the same middle that's on this paper, then at this time, it seems very obvious like that the bigger, the bigger picture in terms of adopting something needs to affect that, it needs to reflect that, you know, and it doesn't, um, it seems like almost consensus already for me.
I think that we have to, to kind of discuss whether, whether the 20 is what, what we're looking for for low and middle, or are we looking for something else to give direction to, to Beth?
I can also make a suggestion. There are various set asides throughout here, most of which are total 20%, of which 15 are low and mod and 5% are the middle income. The planning board could, for example, give me direction to increase the low and moderate income set aside to be the maximum cited in each ordinance, i.e. excluding the middle income. And then from there, I'd like to, if, if folks are happy with that, I'd like to get direction as to whether you'd like to include an additional statement that if you're unsure about how to plan for middle income, we could include a statement that would say something to the effect that the city should consider further incentives that might be, or further zoning changes that might incentivize the creation of middle income housing, something along those lines that would basically open the door to the council considering that additional density in the case of middle income housing, or at least providing policy guidance if it's not written into an ordinance that if a developer comes in and says, I could really use 65 units an acre and I would be willing to do middle income housing, that'll give them a cue that when they make their application before the board, that that's something that the city would like to do, like to see implemented. I would rather have clarity in an ordinance that specifically gives something in exchange for the middle income, but if that's not something that folks can agree to at this point, that's an alternative.
And I think that clarity would come in the ordinance.
I like that comment that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You remember what you said?
Yes.
Do we want to? Go ahead.
Since we're, it seems like we're moving towards consensus on this, what about the CBD? Because that in the proposal was 5% lower is, is it, I think we need to talk about that as a board, whether that 20% carries to.
Well, I think they want the coalition asked for 15%, not 20. So keep with them, it just be a 5% versus a 10%.
I'm sorry.
So, so CBD?
The CBD will ask to go to 15, not 20.
Yes. Yeah, it's currently a 10.
So CBD would go to 15?
Yes, and that, that has no middle income housing written into the plan now, and I'm, I can include that same provision in there that the council or, or, you know, incentives should be given for middle income in that area as well.
That gives us, that covers us and yet still gives us, I think that what we're, what we're looking for. Yeah, the opportunity. Do we, in a situation like this, is it a formal vote or is it, what is it?
I would characterize this in a form of motion.
Right.
Okay.
With the, with the specific recommendations, you know.
Of what Beth said.
Yeah, what Beth said.
Yeah, what Beth said.
Yeah, what Beth said, exactly.
Whereas what Beth said is good.
And the rest of the plan you find to be, the rest of it to be, to be in order, so that when you come back the next time, you're not reopening Pandora's box.
Right.
You're just going to look at these two points, vote, we're done.
Okay.
Move.
Does that work for?
What do you say?
On your end?
Say it again.
Let me, let me try it.
Try, yeah.
Move to adopt the affordable housing plan element and fair share plan with the changes, increasing the amount of loaded moderate set aside to 20%, except for the CBD, which would be set at 15% and to include additional language to incentivize middle income housing on top of that.
Damn, you're good.
I second.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Mike Manzella?
Yes.
Trudy Syfax?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Well done. Oh, Yvonne seconded in the meeting.
Good, I want her to be.
All right. All right, 5:45 Lake Urban Renewal LLC. Sure you can. We have, we have 20 minutes, so go ahead. Who, who's he? For 5:45? 7, yes. Yes. Our Bar, oh, no, not Our Bar. 527, right, the Beer Garden and 527 Bangs. Yes, right, no. Okay. We can, we can. Yeah, we can do that. So we want the 311. Okay. Fine. Okay, no, we're going to do this one quickly. Yeah, we're going to do this one quickly. Okay, that's fine. Who? Well, they, they wanted three minutes. What?
To recess?
Do we, do we have a recess? We motion a recess? Okay, do we need to? Or you already did it? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We can't have, unless we can start doing the time limits on questions. Well, or questions one. Right, but we can do only one. We can, we can do, you can do questions, you can do questions. I mean, I don't know if you can.
527 Bangs? Oh, we're not even going to, uh, 527 Bangs, I'm not doing tonight. 540.
524, 545.
Or you say that you have one time to ask questions and you're done. And is that, that's all right. Cause, cause unless we do three minute questions. You know what I mean? Cause we do three minute comments, we don't do, we. You know?
722, which is me and Carrie. That's just the rendering.
It's like you also don't want to look too unfriendly, but, but people don't like to get to the point, you know? What's this? Okay, so this is for 311. Oh, that's a big chain. Okay. Are we ready? We need Jack. That's, ready to retire? Folks, we have, we have business to take care of.
Folks, if you're going to talk, please talk outside.
Please. We have other items to go.
9:42, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yeah.
Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Trudy Syfax?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Prizza?
Here.
Jen Souter?
Here.
Okay. 5:45 Lake Urban Renewal. We've got 15 minutes.
Okay, well, I have to be a lawyer, be the bearer of bad tidings.
Uh-oh. We don't want any bad tidings.
This way I can take the bullets directly instead of on a ricochet.
Okay.
I've read the resolution, okay? I know the answer to the question, the law, but we can't raise the question because the members who voted in favor of this were Michael Manzella, Barbara Prizza, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton, Sarah Antowery, Anthony Perillo and Rick Lambert. Mayor Moore and Trudy Syfax abstained. Alexis Taylor voted against the motion, so those three members are not eligible. Consider this.
Okay.
We no longer have Sarah Antowery, we no longer have Tony Perillo. So I need five members of a nine member planning board for a quorum. I have Michael Manzella, Barbara Prizza, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton and Rick Lambert. We only have four members. Jennifer, I'm sure.
I'm a Gemini.
Yeah, well, okay. I was born on Christmas, but it's not going to do us any good. Uh, that's absolutely true.
Today's Manzella's birthday.
Congratulations. So Jen Souter, you are now a member of the planning board and no longer a member of the zoning board. Okay, so what I need you to do, so that we have five in order to hear this, this, this matter, I need you to take a, a read for the next meeting of what transpired at our meeting on October 22nd or thereabouts.
Let's make sure that she's listening to everything that she has to listen to.
Yes. Yes, and, and you may, you may want to listen to the prior applications that, that was the, that was the starting point for this, on this. And you can contact me and I can bring up the speed or Barbara can bring this to speed. We need, we need you to get that so that we can have a quorum in order to deal with this.
So we need to carry it.
So we have to carry it.
Yes. Just really, we, just, it's procedural, because the law says I have to have a quorum in order to take formal action and we only have four members of a nine member board.
Cause I, I was, I was just wondering if, and obviously you know better than I do, but it's, it's not a quorum of who voted yes. It's a quorum of the board.
No, it's a quorum of the people who are eligible to vote.
Okay, oh, because so many people.
We have three members. So we have three members currently seating, seated, who are not eligible to vote, and we have two members who resigned from the board. So we're down five members.
Okay.
So in order to get to the fifth member, we need Jennifer.
Okay, so we need to carry this. Oh, hold on, we just, we just moved another item to the 11, which is your other item to the 11.
Which, the other matter I have on tonight?
Yes. Okay, so, so you're going to have also the, the Beer Garden is on that same day and also 527 Bangs is on that same day.
I'll speak very quick.
On all of them.
They're all his.
They're all yours. So if you, if you promise that you're going to speak quickly?
I can bring them all up at the same time. I should gather.
Okay. Okay.
The Beer Garden shouldn't take very long.
Okay.
The other matter, uh, this one shouldn't take very long. We already went to the design review committee on 527.
We did. Okay, so now the other thing is, does Jennifer feel that she can listen by the 11? She asked, okay?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, so this can be carried, 545 Lake Urban Renewal. Can I get a motion to carry it?
Yeah, we can do that, that, that's okay. We're motion to carry without further notice, as noticed at the January meeting, where they're about to get which one, so we'll carry it again without further notice.
Okay.
So move.
All in favor to carry 545 Lake?
Only those, well, anyway.
Okay, so the next one.
Yes.
For 722 and 724 Cookman, um, we need another motion to move that to 311.
I reviewed the notices, they're in proper form, the board has jurisdiction, we can carry it without.
All right, we can carry it without further notice, can I get a motion?
Second.
Cause we have 10 minutes left.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So 722 also carries March 11th.
Without notice. Okay, we have a res, hold, hold your, hold to your seats, we still have things to do. Don't anybody be getting up.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Okay, we have a resolution. Mr. Surf.
Yes, we have the resolution, rather perfunctory that adopted Exhibit A, which was the presentation as amended by Michelle from the last ordinance amendments.
Yes.
And I just, we sent it out on Wednesday, so we need a vote on that. Do you know which?
Yes, Barbara Prizza?
Yes.
Trudy Syfax?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
We have one more housekeeping item. I know it's Alexis's favorite.
Oh, yes.
Go for it.
So I would like to move after review by our board attorney, has determined that the site, site plan committee is superfluous.
Correct.
It's superfluous and also there is no mention of it in our bylaws.
And it's never met.
And it has never met in a couple of years.
So I would move to dissolve the site plan committee.
I will gladly second.
If, if it is in the bylaws, so.
It's not.
And so amend the bylaws.
I checked it in the bylaws, it's not there.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Both.
All right, what, oh, you know, you just want to jump the gun. All right, one other thing that I'd like to mention, a process issue that we want to make sure that we've gotten resolved. I have requested that all of our professionals have all their documents into the planning board secretary the Wednesday before the meeting, end of day Wednesday. This way she has all of Thursday to get all the documents to us, barring any technical difficulties, any questions, so that everything is into the board by the end of day on Thursday. That will give her a day to get it all together and do it.
Thank you.
That's just a procedural process. Okay, great. Any motion to close?
Wait, can I just ask one question?
Oh, man. Still?
Quickly, what is the status with changing ordinances in order to the master plan? Because we have a lot of ordinances that really need to be adopted, and my favorite one I've been trying to get is impervious.
Yeah.
We do not have impervious coverage required.
Okay.
We need to get covered with that.
Okay, so who would normally do that?
We went through with the master plan, but we haven't followed through with the ordinances. So all of these items that you proposed in the master plan are not legally applicable at this time.
Okay.
Building coverage, I just want to know where we are on this.
Okay, so that really has to do with an update on the master plan?
No.
No?
Really ordinances.
Ordinance.
Okay, go ahead, I'll leave it to Mike.
Let me do this, it'll be quicker.
You do that.
So the master plan, reexamination slash master plan was updated, the master plan committee went through committee meetings, y'all did that, right?
Y'all did that.
Over the last year, you came back and you had a list of priorities. I went through, back and forth with Captain Bianco's office and talking about budget, and what do you think the board can handle this year? So he's now got a draft proposal from me that includes the impervious coverage and recommendations there. But what I tried to do is bundle as much as I could into what he thought he could handle budget this year and what the board could handle. So there's, it's like a, it's almost like an omnibus package of things, and the impervious coverage is in there, so he gave me comments back on it, so I better make a tweet to it, and then I think there'll be some authorization to be in that one.
Yep, all right, so it's already included in there.
I mean, I have a lot, but...
Well, I'm, actually, we could show, we could show you what's being proposed, so you have some idea of what's coming. Cause that's no secret.
It's right out of the master plan reexamination.
It's no secret, so it's like, we can show you that, and we could actually show the rest of the board what that is. Okay?
Move to adjourn.
Second.